Everybody. Today is July 29, 2020. The Select Budget Committee will come to order. The time is 10:03 a.m. And I'm Teresa Moscata, Chair of the Select Budget Committee. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Peterson. Here. Sawant. Strauss. Gonzalez.
Here.
Herbold.
Here.
Lewis.
Present.
Juarez.
Here.
Chair Moscata.
Here.
Eight present.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Good morning, colleagues, and good morning, members of the public. Thank you again for joining the Select Budget Committee on July 29. Again, this is a two-part conversation today, but colleagues, you can really think of this as a two-part series this week, with Wednesday's meeting being combined with Friday's conversation as well. As you saw from the agenda, today we will have robust public comment. Given the number of people signed up, which is almost 300 people, I'm really going to endeavor to try to get through as many people as possible. For folks who are listening in on the Listen In line or waiting for their name to be called, we are going to scale the time to 45 seconds so we can get through as many people as possible. I'm also going to start public comment with 90 minutes so we can see how many folks we can get through. And then I will extend it if there is a possibility of getting additional folks heard today. What that means, colleagues, is that the majority of our agenda today will be discussed in the afternoon portion. Appreciate all of your folks who have provided additional feedback on the non-SPD-related amendments. Your offices have been incredibly helpful in thinking through non-SPD amendments, and that discussion last Wednesday was robust. We do have a handful of additional non-SPD-related amendments that will be discussed today and then voted on on Friday morning. Today, we will also have an overview of what the SPD inquest has entailed so far and what the process looks like next. As a reminder, our non-SPD amendments today will be voted on on Friday morning, but the majority of Friday will be dedicated to SPD-related amendments. Those SPD-related amendments, if we do not finish those on Friday, will be discussed again on Monday morning, August 3, beginning after council briefing. We will then have the opportunity to follow up with votes on SPD and any additional amendments on Wednesday, August 5, with the intent to finally wrap up our 2020 rebalancing package with a final vote on Monday, August 10. Council colleagues, this is a timeline that I walked through on Monday. If there was the need for additional time to vote draft amendments and to make sure that we got feedback from Central Staff and Law, it does look like we will need the Wednesday, August 5 date. So please do note that there is a calendar hold coming your way for August 5 as well. So as a reminder, it's really a two-part series this week. Today, wrapping up our non-SPD conversation, a conversation about what the SPD inquest has included so far, and continuing those conversations on Friday with a vote on non-SPD amendments and diving into the menu of SPD-related amendments on Friday. Are there any questions? Okay, seeing no questions. If there's no objection, today's agenda will be adopted. Hearing no objection, let's go ahead and launch into public comment. As I mentioned, there's over 280 people signed up for today's public comment, so we are going to have an extended public comment today. Please note that we are continuing to operate and learn as we work from home due to COVID-related pandemic, and we are looking for ways to fine-tune this process. I appreciate all the folks who've been calling in between shifts and caring for folks at home and running small businesses. We're going to try to get through as much as we possibly can today, recognizing that we've had public comment at every meeting, but we have not been able to get through everyone at some of those meetings. Last Thursday, we got through the entire list, which was really, it felt really good to be able to call on everybody, and we're going to try and endeavor to do that today again. The public comment here is going to last for 90 minutes. Each speaker will be given 45 seconds. You will have a chime that you look here at 10 seconds into the remainder of your time. And we will make sure that folks get the chance to send in remaining comments to council@seattle.gov. You can also email our individual offices as usual. I'm going to call three speakers at a time in the order in which they have signed up. That includes folks who are, that includes folks who are also calling in who may work in Seattle but don't have a Seattle zip code. We're just going to go ahead and go through the order in which folks have called in today. You'll be here, you will hear a prompt to unmute yourself. That's your cue to begin speaking. Please state your name, and you're welcome to talk to any item that is in front of the Select Budget Committee. That includes SPD and non-SPD-related issues. As we had an individual ask that question last time, I wanted to make sure folks know you can speak to any issues related to the budget. Again, once you've completed your public comment, we will ask you to hang up on the call-in line, and that gives you the chance to watch on Seattle Channel, either their online streaming, on TV, or listen in on our Listen In line. The public comment period is now open. It is 10:09 a.m., and I will call the first three speakers. Samuel LeBlanc, Lynn Madala, and Jaslyn Huerta. Samuel, good morning.
Hello, my name is Samuel LeBlanc, and I'm a resident in District 7. I'm honored to have the privilege of starting off public comments by saying we must defund the Seattle Police by at least 50% because the people of Seattle will not stand for anything less. Despite new laws and promises from Seattle leaders, including Mayor Durkan and Chief Best, Seattle Police have continued to use violent tactics against protesters, including use of tear gas, pepper spray, and blast balls. These weapons continue to be used indiscriminately against peaceful protesters, legal observers, and reporters alike, with no regard for public safety or human morality. I'm absolutely disgusted and ashamed of our city's police response. The motto of the Seattle Police Department is service, pride, dedication. But it is clear to me that the police are only dedicated towards delivering their own needs of white pride and white supremacy, which they get from harming the black and brown people of Seattle. I call on the Seattle City Council to honor their commitment to defunding this fundamentally flawed and racist institution.
Thank you very much, Samuel. Before we move to Lynn, I just want to say thank you to Councilmember Morales, who has also joined us a while back, and I did not get a chance to welcome her. So thank you for being here, Councilmember Morales. Lynn, good morning, welcome.
Good morning. My name is Lynn Madala. I'm a volunteer with Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense and a Seattle resident. Black young men and boys are dying from gun violence at an alarming rate. It's critical that we reimagine our public safety system and invest in local BIPOC-led violence intervention and prevention organizations. In the revised 2020 budget, we urge you to allocate $4.7 million for community pathways to build out their capacity to prevent gun violence in a way that builds safe and strong communities, and $10.8 million for the Seattle Community Safety Initiative, a partnership of four people-of-color-led organizations, including community pathways, whose strategies are highly effective in preventing and reducing gun violence. These funds could be, could not be better investment of our tax dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, perfect timing. Thanks, Lynn. Jaslyn, welcome.
Hello, I'm Jaslyn Huerta. I live in District 3 on Capitol Hill, and I'm calling to request that you decrease the SPD's budget by at least 50% and reinvest that money into community-led solutions. I'm excited for Decriminalize Seattle and King County Equity Now's four-point plan. I think it's smart, practical, and a step in the right direction. We ask too much of our police force, and it's clear that it's not working. In the last 60 days, I've witnessed and experienced unconscionable terror at the hands of the SPD. As a society, we've made the mistake of giving them too much power, too big of a budget, and too many weapons of war. It's time to correct that wrong. Let's demilitarize the SPD and reinvest in community-led solutions. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I yield my time.
Thank you, Jaslyn. The next three are Sean Butterfield, Dan Kavanaugh, and Alan Ballway. Sean, good morning.
Hi, my name is Sean Butterfield. I'm a home care aide, renter in District 3, and a member of Socialist Alternative. My disabled partner and I marched on Saturday from Seattle Central College around the neighborhood and then down 12th. As we turned from 12th onto Pine at the East Precinct, heading back toward where we started, we were met with flash bangs and tear gas even without any audible notice dispersed. What kind of operation is SPD running? One minute, we're in a perfectly peaceful march without any violence to human beings whatsoever, and the next, there are flash bangs going off of the wheels of my partner's wheelchair as the frightened crowd pours around her to escape the maelstrom, and tear gas fills the air. Mayor Durkan goes on CNN and tells the world she doesn't want Trump's federal agents here, but then authorizes the same level of violence against protesters herself. It's fucking perverse, and we can't accept this. Seven of you promised to deliver a 50% cut on the SPD budget, and it is time to deliver on that promise.
Thank you, Dan, welcome.
Hey, my name is Dan. I'm a member of Socialist Alternative, and I'm a nursing student. And me and my classmates think it's outrageous that SPD maced a nurse in the face at Saturday's protest. And not only that, at that protest, Mayor Durkan's police fully collaborated with Trump's federal agents. And it makes me furious to hear councilmembers go on and on about how defunding is a long, drawn-out process that will take time. We never hear these excuses when you want to cut funding for housing, transit, homelessness services. This is a delay tactic. We won't stand for it. You say you have to negotiate with SPAG. The president of SPAG called for Trump's federal deans to come to Seattle, and this is the organization you want to negotiate with? Go around them. Defund by 50% now in this year's budget. No delay.
Alan, welcome.
My name's Alan Ballway. I'm a resident of District 7, and I want to talk about what systemic racism looks like today. Systemic racism is when appropriations are altered to fund new car infrastructure for West Seattle, one of the whitest communities in Seattle, while public transit projects are cut across the board. Systemic racism is increasing appropriations for the police department and even adding a new position while we are in a budget crisis, while there's been no justice for Charlina Lyles and her family, while we still don't know the name of the black man who was murdered by Seattle Police when they shot him in the back, while nonviolent protesters for black lives continue to be tear gassed, maced, blast balled, shot at, arrested without cause, and denied their civil liberties by police, while police intentionally attack legal observers and media reporting on police brutality, and while some members of this council scramble to find excuses not to meet the demands of the community and defund it.
Thank you. The next three people are Tushar Kurnan, Lucas Vargas Zapatillo, and Uma Rao. Tushar, welcome.
Hi, my name is Tushar Kurana, and I live in Seattle, District 6. I'm calling because I believe that defunding SPD by at least 50% and reinvesting in community is necessary for public safety, particularly in the context of the pandemic. Real safety involves funding healthy communities, not divesting from social services and then paying more and more police to prevent violence through the threat of more violence and brutality, which they have been doing. Please meet the demands put forward by Decriminalize Seattle and King County Equity Now to defund SPD by at least 50% and reinvest in community. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucas, welcome.
Hello, I'm Lucas, a graduate student at the University of Washington and a resident of D3. I have attended many of the peaceful protests since George Floyd's murder, and I urge the City Council to defund the Seattle Police Department by at least 50%. Our police department's bloated budget takes away invaluable resources from communities of color during a pandemic that has killed black and Hispanic people in King County at a rate more than twice that of white residents. The police in this city have spent the months since Floyd's murder attacking peaceful crowds, arresting protesters at random, and issuing half-hearted justifications for their violence. They are running amok through the streets and do not deserve the privilege of being at the table when budgetary discussions of their institutions feature take place. They have lost any claim to the public trust, and their budget allocation must reflect this. Please listen to black leadership and vote to defund the SPD by at least 50%.
Thank you. Uma, welcome.
Good morning. My name is Uma. I'm a member of Salvation for Black Lives. I'm calling to support Decriminalize Seattle and King County Equity Now's demands to defund SPD by at least 50% and to reinvest in our community. To know that our schools and education budgets get cut, and I consistently have to vote through levies to bring funding to our schools, while the police budget continues to increase and remains ineffective, is, in my opinion, a terrible use of resources. Our police force does not keep our communities safe. They violently displace our homeless neighbors consistently. The sweeps don't make me feel safer. They make me feel more afraid. The city should really invest in housing, education, and other priorities that your residents have been advocating for for years. As a proud resident of Beacon Hill, I support the demands to defund SPD by at least 50%. And thank you to Councilmember Morales for representing me in this, and I urge the entire council to stand behind this committee.
Thank you very much. The next three are Siri Gillespie, Peter Schelito, and Chelsea Di Pasquet Hutton. Siri, good morning.
Kialax, good morning. My name is Siri, and I'm a Laska Native, Wamangak, therapist, social worker, student, currently living in District 4 on stolen land of the Duamish people. I'm urging council to support defunding SPD by 50%. The police are tasked with violently enforcing marginalization and displacement of BIPOC peoples, the history of which is worse right here in District 4. Alex Peterson, your email signature says Black Lives Matter, and black and indigenous communities have told you what matters to them, and you've dismissed this. These demands are not made lightly, and they are the result of decades of research and resistance, reflect on your anti-black and anti-indigenous paternalism, and take action to right this violence. I urge council members to support Decriminal Seattle and King County Equity Now's four-point plan for community reinvestment in those funds. Angunas kogasakos.
The next person is Peter, welcome.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Peter Schelito. I'm a scientist living in Alex Peterson's District 4 in Wallingford. I support participatory budgeting as the best way to reinvest the money that will be divested from SPD. As a former NASA contractor, I have seen how successful competitive budgeting strategies can be. The system allows for desirable outcomes to be explicitly requested and fulfilled using metrics decided ahead of time. Here in Seattle, participatory budgeting can be designed to explicitly provide for safety and health. The project-based focus of PB ensures that failed ventures will not result in lasting harm or expense, in stark contrast to the current police force, which needs to be defunded by at least 50%. Thank you to the seven council members working on my behalf. A successful transition away from police-controlled 911 and towards a civilian-led system depends on your continued strong leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Chelsea, welcome.
Good morning. My name is Chelsea Di Pasquale Hutton. I am an educator with Seattle Public Schools, and I am also calling to call on the council to defund Seattle Police Department by at least 50%. I have watched our kids struggle with lack of resources. I've watched the school struggle with lack of resources. I've watched homeless tents go up all over the city that have, that were not there as I was growing up in Seattle. And I feel like the council needs to prioritize the people of the city and what the people of the city are asking for, specifically the brown and black populations of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. The next three people are Mike Sloan, Thomas Hudson, and Megan Tamwali. Mike, welcome.
My name is Mike Solan. I'm the president of the Seattle Police Officers Guild. I call on the Seattle City Council to vote no on defunding SPD. If SPD is defunded, the chop crime wave would spread across our entire city. Just today in Seattle, we are seeing a 40% increase in homicides. 85% of the police budget is salary-based. Removing 50% of the police budget, you would force the city to fire up to 800 officers, and crime will skyrocket. Councilmembers Herbold, Strauss, and Lewis said less than a year ago that Seattle needs more police, not less. In less than 36 hours, SPAG has collected over 20,000 signatures at StopDefunding.com. Seattle City Council, stop playing politics with public safety. StopDefunding.com.
Thank you. Thomas, good morning.
Hello, my name is Thomas Hudson, and I'm just a human. I think after we defund SPD, because I know we will, we need to really invest that money into the black communities who have been most affected by the damage that police and systemic racism in this country have been causing lots of damage to. And specifically, I think that needs to really go into education and housing and health services to help build a better future for the people who have had a future damaged repeatedly by this nation. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Megan, welcome.
My name is Megan Tamwali. Good morning. I am a resident of District 7, and I'm calling in support of defunding the remaining 2020 SPD budget by 50% at the very least. And I stand in full and unconditional support of the Everyday March. Police officers are public servants who are meant to protect and serve us. They're making hundreds of thousands of dollars annually while there are homeless citizens, underfunded schools, and families who are at risk and have been evicted. And this is unacceptable. This money must be reinvested into black communities and a racist system. And within a city that has specifically targeted black communities, we have to specifically invest in black communities. This has to start now with no excuses and no rules. If you're going to say that black lives matter, please prove it. Defund it. To do anything less is a disappointment and direct violence to the communities that you serve. This isn't politics, it's human rights. Thank you.
Thank you. The next three people are Josh Castle, John Thoreau, and Ellen Lovellis. Josh, good morning.
Hi, good morning. I'm Josh Castle with Lehigh. Thank you, last week, city council members, for passing $18 million per year for affordable housing in the central area to combat racist gentrification, and $3.6 million for more tiny house villages to help get more people inside and protected from COVID. We stand in solidarity with many other organizations and community leaders that the referral process for the villages and other shelters needs fundamental reform and a transition away from SPD involvement. And you received a letter this morning from us as well on this. People and families experiencing homelessness, the city of Seattle, and the many organizations who currently receive NAV Team referrals, such as Lehigh, DESC, and The Bridge, would be better served if these referrals were from organizations that are culturally qualified to do this work, such as Urban League, Costa Latina, Chief Seattle Club, Seattle Indian Center, Reach, and Faith Communities in the Central Area.
Thank you, Josh. John, welcome.
Thank you. Hi, my name is John Thoreau, and I am here in support of defunding the SPD by 50% by following the comprehensive plan put forward together by King County Equity Now. The police do not keep us safe. They protect systems of white supremacy. Our police violently respond whether crime is occurring, has ended, or is perceived. Every day, we see the misuse of this violence and experience the massive damage it has had on our black and indigenous family. SPD has shown, they would rather use chemical weapons on peaceful protesters than stop killing black people. They would rather arrest bystanders and pepper spray nurses than look for real agitators. We Seattleites are not criminals to be rounded up. We are people. We are supposed to be free citizens, and our police are attacking us with impunity. The mayor and chief best have been caught lying many times, including about SPD's role in the death of Lorenzo Anderson. Please.
Thank you. Ellen, welcome.
I'm Ellen Levis, a District 6 renter, St. John's parishioner, member of the Sunrise Movement. I too believe we need to defund SPD by at least 50% and reinvest in communities. Council members, will you allow the police to enforce a white priority status quo by terrorizing black and brown communities? Will you remain complicit in armed relocation of folks without homes during a deadly pandemic? Will you allow fear mongering from the police guild to control our city? Or will you pass a budget that truly represents the values you claim? Please cast your votes for justice. Defund SPD by at least 50% in the 2020 rebalance, including eliminating the navigation team. Sign under the four-point plan from Decriminalize Seattle and King County Equity Now and use extensive participatory budgeting for 2021. End of comment.
Thank you. The next three are Beth Darngson, Ashlyn O'Brien, and Guy Orin. Beth, good morning.
Good morning. My name is Beth Darngson. I'm from District 5 in North Seattle. Defunding SPD is a radical experiment that will hurt the vulnerable at the most. And why are you cutting the protection when many of you have called, on the Seattle City Council, have called SPD for protection recently? We know you have. Why are you cutting the protection for everyone else? Why have you not denounced arson and violence by rioters or the injuries to SPD officers, your own employees? That's unconscionable. You should be protecting your own employees when they're injured on the job by violent attackers. Thank you.
Thank you. Ashlyn, welcome.
Hi, I'm speaking today on behalf of the Seattle chapter of the International League of People's Struggles, ILPS. We stand in firm solidarity with the Black Liberation Movement and Decriminalize Seattle's proposal to replace the current 911 system with a civilian-controlled one, fund the scaling up of community-led solutions, support a community-created roadmap to life without policing, and invest in housing for all. We know that police, like the US military, are a force of violent occupation within oppressed communities and will not be safe until they are abolished completely. One way the city can reinvest funding in black community-owned institutions is to return rightful ownership of what is currently known as NAMM to the African-American Heritage Museum and Cultural Center. City council should investigate the Urban League, support turning the museum over to its rightful owners, and invest in a genuine cultural center that the rightful owners are building.
Thank you. Guy, good morning.
Good morning. My name is Guy Orin. I'm a member of the End the Deadly Exchange Campaign and resident of Seattle. I am here in full solidarity with Decriminalize Seattle and King County Equities Now's demands and four-point plan to defund the SPD. The SPD's violence has only gone worse and is part of a global trend of militarization, surveillance, and police brutality. And reinvest in community instead of funding these harmful systems. Thank you.
Thank you. Ian Robinson, followed by Anna Lee Bremler, and then Hannah LeBlanc. Ian, good morning.
Good morning. I'm calling in support of Decriminalize Seattle and King County Equity Now's demands to defund the police by at least 50% and reinvest those funds in black communities specifically. Seattle Police have shown us with ample evidence over the past few months that their priority is not public safety. Their priority is suppression of dissent. This organization needs to be defunded immediately. I yield my time.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, Anna Lee.
Hi, good morning. My name is Anna Lee Bemler. I live in District 6. Thank you for your pledges to defund the police by 50%. I need you to hold to that. And not only do that, but give the money to black communities. This isn't even just about the protests. Even before all this stuff went on, the police have been preying on black communities and killing them again and again. There was a moment where a person of color wouldn't leave my apartment, and I was afraid to call the police because I thought they would show up and shoot them. This is unacceptable. We need real public safety and not just men showing up with guns and murdering people. Do you understand? I yield my time.
Okay, thank you. Hannah, good morning.
Hi, my name is Hannah LeBlanc, and I am a lifelong resident of the Queen Anne Neighborhood. I am adding my voice of support for the call to defund SPD and reinvest that money in black and brown communities and community safety. If anyone on the city council has not seen videos of the violence that police were inflicting against peaceful protesters in our city this past weekend, I urge you to do so. There are many of them, and they are horrifying. My family is scared of me protesting because they are scared of me getting assaulted by the Seattle Police. We are a white family, and this is a new year for them. They are suddenly experiencing just a taste of what black and brown parents deal with every day when their children need the help. My community was safe growing up, not because it was heavily policed. It was safe because people had resources, and we need to use SPD budget to give resources to communities that need them. I had the privilege of growing up in a Seattle where I did not have to fear the police, and that should not be a privilege granted only to some.
Thank you. Ryan Yuka, followed by Michael Melley, sorry, Melley. And then Kate Simpson. Ryan, good morning.
Hello, my name is Ryan Yuka, and I'm a resident of District 3 and a member of UAW 4121. I'm calling today to urge council to take $85 million from the 2020 police budget and invest that into affordable housing and community services for black and brown communities. This includes cutting the homeless sweeps program, which is ineffective, harmful, and inhumane. If you want to decrease crime in Seattle, then we must invest in community resources to prevent the root causes of crime, not continuing an outdated punitive system of policing. Seven of nine council members have promised to cut SPD budget by 50%, and it is time to make good on that promise. SPD does not keep us safe, nor do they prevent crime, and merely react to crime. If SPD has overspent their budget earlier in the year,
then that is mismanagement they must now deal with, not us. You must cut the remaining SPD 2020 budget by 50%, and the people of Seattle will not accept anything less. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael, good morning.
Hi, I'm a Capitol Hill resident calling to denounce the truly disturbing behavior of SPD this summer, including that we maced and clubbed legal observers, nurses, and demonstrators literally on top of the Black Lives Matter street beryl. I've called the council to commit to its pledge to defund SPD by 50% this year and next, and I'm supporting Decriminalize Seattle and King County Equity Now four-point plan for transition to more restorative justice plan, especially point number three, to fund a community-created roadmap to life without policing that will help make sure that structure has been placed for this transition. Thank you.
Thank you. And Kate, good morning. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Kate.
My name is Kate Simpson, and I live in Capitol Hill. I am in favor of defunding SPD by at least 50% and reinvesting in community and restorative justice. Over the past two months, SPD has demonstrated they are accountable to no one. They have been violent and unhinged towards protesters using chemical weapons indiscriminately. It has become clear they do not keep our communities safe. I support the demands put forward by Decriminalize Seattle and King County Equity Now, defend SPD by 50% to use those funds to invest in public health and safety and eliminate and transfer SPD functions. Nothing less than defunding will begin to heal the violence committed by police against Seattle's Black, Brown, and Indigenous communities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next three people are Brigida Smith, Su Young Yun, and Stefan Welch. Brigida, good morning.
Hi, I'm Brigida Smith. I'm calling to say I think the city council should commit to defunding the Seattle Police Department by at least 50% for the remainder of 2020, equivalent to $85 million, and reallocate the funds to Black communities, focusing on affordable housing and education. The president of FOB called today to say that SPD budget is at 85% salaries, and cutting it would force him to fire a large number of officers. And he's right. Let's fire the officers who think it's okay to tear gas citizens of their own city and instead give the money to communities who've been suffering at the hands of the police for decades. And also, the new youth jail should not be closed in 2025, but should be closed right now, and the children being held should be released. The city pushes people into poverty, then criminalizes poverty and homelessness, and offers no resources to help those most at risk. Do your job. I yield-
Thank you. Su Young, good morning.
Hi, my name is Su Young Yun. I'm the program manager at APACE, Asian Pacific Islander, American Pacific Empowerment. I'm calling to support Decriminalize Seattle and King County Equity Now's demand to defund SPD by at least 50% and reinvest in community-based four-point plan. Policing is a racist, anti-Black, and anti-Indigenous institution that doesn't keep our communities safe. As an Asian American and opposite residence in the Chinatown International District, I see how police do not prevent crime in our community. They respond to crimes late and sometimes not at all, and inflict more violence on our communities by criminalizing poverty and violently displacing our homeless neighbors. The city should invest in housing, drug use or health, and other forms of caring services to ensure that safety is extended to everyone in our community. As a resident of the CID, APACE supports the demands to defund SPD. Thank you.
Thank you. Stefan, welcome.
The misfortune to have a complete stranger. My name is Steve Welch. Don't defund the police. Here's why. I had the misfortune to have a complete stranger try to kick in my Green Lake apartment's door. This person kicked the living daylights out of a steel door over 20 times, and the more I spoke to him, the more enraged he became. I dialed 911. Police arrived quickly and deescalated immediately. They even asked me if I wanted to come out and talk to the person once called. They demonstrated a dramatic decline in the use of force, which bears out in SPD's statistics. I then arranged a ride-along in the South Precinct. I learned that if grandmothers had their way, there would be a lot less lawbreaking. From SPD officers, I saw patience, respect for others, competence, and calm, clear communications.
Thank you, Stefan. And if you had more, please do send that in. Appreciate it. Til Sean Turner, followed by Blake Madden and Derek Lum. Til Sean, Til Sean, welcome.
Hi, my name is Til Sean Turner, and I'm one of the organizers of the Everyday March, and I'm calling in support to defund the SPD by 50%. I have personally been a victim of their brutality. June 26th is a prime example of that. When I was pulled over for no reason at all after somebody decided they wanted to lie and pull a gun on me and say it was me, I was confronted by SPD officers with guns. Arrested, no charges ever filed. So therefore, SPD needs to come up off that because they've been doing this for way too long, and we ain't standing for it no more. We're not taking nothing less than that $85 million. I promise you that. By any means, we're not taking nothing less. So defund SPD this year by 50% and reallocate those funds to Black communities specifically.
Thank you very much. Blake, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Blake Madden. I live in District Three on Capitol Hill with my wife, one block from the East Police Precinct. I demand the council to defund SPD by at least 50% and reinvest in community safety now via Decriminalize Seattle's plan. This past Saturday, as we tried to exercise our First Amendment right to protest, my wife and I were shot at with rubber bullets, hit directly with flashbangs. We ate tear gas. We were tackled, beaten, arrested, and jailed overnight for simply not retreating from a police onslaught fast enough. My wife was denied medical attention and now has a serious neck injury because an officer literally put his knee in her neck. We're through with our money paying for our abuse and the abuse of Black and Brown communities. I don't know why council member Peterson is determined to be on the wrong side of history, but he might want to wake up.
Thank you for sharing your story, and I think folks will follow up with you. The next person is Derek Lum.
From CDA Today to... Oh, hi, there are council members. My name's Derek Lum. I'm here upstate and from CDA Today, calling on you to support Decriminalize Seattle and King County Equity Now's calls for defunding SPD by 50% and reinvesting in community solutions. I can just say that I see police respond to things that they have no ability or right or need to respond to, such as being a part of homeless camp with sweeps. There are social workers who can do that work and do do that work, and there is no need for the police to be involved in such matters. Please reinvest in community solutions, make all of our communities safer. Thank you.
Thank you. The next three people are Kelsey McGrath, Gabrielle Pelly, and Matthew R. Kelsey, good morning.
Hi, my name is Kelsey McGrath. I live in District Three, and I'm a teacher. I'm urging the city council to vote to defund SPD by 50% this year and next year. Execute the four-point plan put forth by Decriminalize Seattle and King County Equity Now to invest in community-based solutions to health and safety and use participatory budgeting in 2021. To those who are worried, we are moving too quickly to dismantle white supremacist institutions. Here are words from lawyer and abolitionist Derica Purnell. But if abolitionists waited to convince every single person that liberation was worth the pursuit, Black people might still be on plantations. Slavery's violence and repression was riskier than Black people's plans, imagination, and will to be free. They held the uncertainty in their bellies and started running. Rather than waiting for comforting answers to every potential harm ahead of us, let's run.
Thank you, and please do feel free to send in the rest of your comments. Gabrielle, welcome.
Hi, my name is Gabe Pelly. I'm a resident of District Four and a member of Socialist Alternative. I'm speaking in support of the demands of the People's Budget Movement because the capitalist system is entering the next Great Depression, and already over 40% of renters are facing eviction, and 40 million Americans are unemployed, disproportionately impacting our Black and Brown neighbors. Our movement will not accept an austerity budget that taxes the hell out of working people who are already at the breaking point. Aggressive taxation that funds racist police and cuts community funding is exactly how we got here. Cut SPD by at least 50%, fit $85 million this year, and invest that money in social needs, including housing in tiny house villages, restorative justice and jobs programs, eviction defense, and renter organizing, and lastly, stop the sweeps and pass the Nicholsville-Northlake proviso.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Matthew, welcome.
All right. Hello. I've lived in Seattle my whole life. This is Matthew here, and I've worked for the city for 15 years, the last eight with the police department. I've been at protests that are peaceful and some that were more like riots. I've tried hard to listen and ask questions when I can. So I wanted to share a little bit from my perspective. A lot of the change people have told me they want is already occurring in SPD as far as accountability, transparency, mental health court, drug referrals, victim support, working with service providers, and collaborative policing. I've heard a lot of people say they're upset with the disparities to housing, schools, healthcare, lending practices, student security, environmental justice. I've also heard city council members say they are confident they will be on the right side of the country. I think we as a city need to come together more than ever instead of taking sides. We recognize we all want Seattle to be a better place. Set up ways to connect instead of furthering the divide. That's what I'm asking, just to connect and be together.
Thank you for your message. If you had more, please do feel free to send that in. The next three people are Jessica Skalzo, Madison Lynn Howie, and Indu Nayar. Jessica, good morning.
Hi, good morning. My name is Jessica Skalzo. I live in District Three. Thank you for the opportunity today. I am calling again to encourage the council to defund SPD by 50% for the rebalancing of the 2020 budget because this can eliminate SPD functions that harm people, such as homeless sweeps, attacking peaceful protesters, and surveillance of Black Indigenous people of color. We can transfer that money to invest in underfunded Black and Brown community-led restorative justice programs that actually help and support people. Our budget reflects our values, so let's change our values from surveillance, violence, and white supremacy to community inclusiveness, access, and opportunity. I support the four-point program by King County Equity Now and Decriminalize Seattle. Thank you again.
Thank you. Madison Lynn, welcome.
Hi, my name is Madison Lynn, and I am a resident of District Seven. I am calling today to urge the council members to defund SPD by at least 50%. I am not only the daughter of a Florida state trooper, but also a protester who has been present on the ground and witnessed to multiple instances of SPD's use of excessive force. Time and time again over the last six weeks, the SPD has proven that they are the escalators of violence at these protests, and their actions have been rewarded by the virtue of absence of consequence. On Saturday, SPD's indiscriminate use of chemical weapons on protesters came mere hours after the ban was irresponsibly lifted by Judge Roberts. SPD deliberately targeted the press as legal observers, which is indisputably on video evidence, as well as illegal chokes. What we learned over the last six weeks that these acts are not one-off. They are not a result of failure of training. In conclusion-
Madison Lynn, please do send your conclusion in to us. The next person is Indu, welcome.
Hi, my name is Indu Nayar, and I'm representing the Seattle American Coalition. I agree with ACLU. They said that SPD does not want to be held accountable for police brutality. There are clearly identifiable medics, journalists, and photographers who were attacked by them. I heard someone say, "Stop playing politics with public safety," and I agree. This is why I insist that this council defund police. Because not only are the police playing politics, they are fear mongering and attacking the people they have sworn to protect. They have failed in the one thing they were hired to do. It's clear that SPD is overrun by white supremacists. How dare they say that they would file BIPOC if their budget is cut? Release the protesters that you have arrested. I yield my time.
Thank you. The next three people are Ashen Ebby, Allison Isenger, and Tati Swan. Ashen, welcome.
Hi, my name is Ashen Ebby. I'd like to say that Black Lives Matter. I support Decriminalize Seattle and King County Equity Now four-point plan. SPD must be defunded by 50% at least, and this must not just be a ledger shift. There need to be 50% fewer booths on the ground. The problem with patrol is that it's 28% of the budget. It puts fresh officers in contact with overpoliced communities. It leads to violence against these police communities. It's ineffective. In 2014, NYPD did a work slowdown and saw a statistically significantly greater than 15% reduction in felony crime. 1973 Kansas City preventative patrol experiment found no relation between patrol and crime rate, between crime rate, between patrol and perceived police presence, between that and crime reporting rate, between that and time spent. Anyway, I support the four-point plan, no new youth jail.
Okay, wonderful. Thanks. Allison Isenger, welcome.
Thank you, council members. Good morning. My name is Allison Isenger. I'm with the Seattle-King County Coalition on homelessness. The coalition supports the work of Decriminalize Seattle and the overdue work to craft a city budget that begins to invest significantly in what makes us truly safer and healthier. True public safety and community health means putting people first, especially those who are Black, Indigenous, Brown, and people who are inconveniently, invisibly poor, disabled, and homeless. Because of the movement for Black lives and the suffering, injury, and death of countless numbers of people, this city has an opportunity to close wasteful, counterproductive, and harmful programs. The entire navigation team must be defunded and the resources redirected to genuine health promotion, healthcare, home-
Thank you, Allison. Please send in the rest of your comments via email. Tati, good morning.
Hi, my name is Tati Swan. I'm an organizer with the Everyday March, and I stand with the Summer's People Budget. I'm a Seattleite fighting for the defunding of SPD by 50% and reallocating those funds to Black communities like the Central District, the South End, and White Center. If Black lives truly matter, I urge Alex Peterson and Deborah Warris to stop ignoring the Black community inside with the Black community by defunding the police by 50%. Thank you.
Thank you. Derek Bonafilia, followed by Sept-
Oh, wait.
Derek, if you could just put your-
My name is Tati Swan. I'm an organizer-
There you go. Just put it on mute real quick. The next three people are Derek Bonafilia, Sept Grantz, and Xenat Yahad. Apologies for the mispronunciation. Derek, good morning.
Derek, good morning.
Derek, can you hear us? Just go ahead and put yourself on, put the mute on the audio that you're listening to. That way, we don't hear it reverberate over here. I think that works. Go ahead, Derek.
Ah, so fucked up.
You're still there, Derek. If you can go ahead.
Oh, sorry.
You're good. We have your time ready to go. Okay, good morning. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm a renter in D6. I'm a renter in D6 and unceded Duamish land. I'm calling today to express my support for defunding SPD by 50% and investing in Black communities now in this budget cycle. You've all seen the videos of them singling out legal observers and press in addition to their indiscriminate violence against protesters. This is how they're treating people in our society with the most protection, in broad daylight, with cameras all around and thousands of witnesses. What's far more heinous is how they're treating Black and Indigenous communities when they think no one's watching. When they shot Sean Fier in the head while he held his baby in his arms. When they murdered Charlene Lyles in front of her children. We spend $409 million a year on this murderous force while crucial community-based organizations go underfunded, while drinking water at South Seattle schools are contaminated by dangerous amounts of blood, while thousands-
Thank you, Derek. Please send in the remainder of your comments. The next person is Xenat. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Xenat Yahad, and I'm a resident of District Three. I'm asking the city council to reinvest in community-based solutions to health and safety by voting to eliminate and transfer SPD funds and reduce the budget by $94 million as requested by Decriminalize Seattle and King County Equity Now. I believe defunding SPD is necessary because a budget is a statement of values, and if the city, we say we value Black lives and support today's movement, then it's time for our budget to reflect that. Black people are three times more likely to be shot and killed by police than white people. That's someone's daughter, mother, child, husband, father, or sibling. Policing is an institution rooted in racism and slavery. My ask is that the city stop placing value on an institution that was directly created to continue enslaving and killing Black people. Thank you.
Thank you. The next three people are Marietta Adlita, Erica Jacobson, and Evan Weiderspan. Marietta, good morning.
Hi, my name is Marietta. I'm an immigrant and a person of color. I live and work in downtown Seattle, just six blocks away from the January mass shooting at Tertan Pine. Do not defund SPD by 50%. SPD is already understaffed, and with the city growing rapidly, calls for service are increasing. I do not want less officers. I want more officers who are able to respond to priority calls in seven minutes or less. We don't live in utopia. There are criminals, rioters, arsonists. We have seen just this last weekend during the so-called peaceful protest. I urge council members to vote no on defunding SPD.
Thank you. Erica, welcome.
My name is Erica Jacobson, and I rent in District Two. I urge you all to commit to the demands of King County Equity Now and Decriminalize Seattle. I grew up and loved seven brilliant Black cousins and a Black uncle who immigrated from Nigeria. We grew up within 10 minutes of each other. We're homeschooled together, played together, and went to church and high school together. Our families are inseparable. In 2017, I woke up to a phone call from my mother with the news that my 24-year-old cousin had been murdered by a police officer, beating in his own neighborhood. These stories are so incredibly common within the BIPOC community. Every BIPOC family I know has a story of police violence. The disparity in equity that Black families face with the police is disgusting and unacceptable. Reform has been proven not to work. Defund SPD by 50% immediately. Say his name, David Amico Morty. I shouldn't have to share my family's trauma with you all to recognize the urgency of these demands. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your story, especially about David Amico Morty. The next person is Evan. Evan, welcome.
Hey, my name is Evan Weiderspan from District Two. I'm calling to state my support for defunding the Seattle Police Department. I want to reiterate the demands made by Decriminalize Seattle Organization, including defund the SPD by at least 50%, reallocate those funds to community-led safety systems, and release the protesters arrested during the separation without charges. Money that has moved away from the police department should be reallocated to local groups that have a proven history of increased public safety. That is why I also want to support the participatory budget process created by Decriminalize Seattle and King County Equity Now, where community members get to decide how to spend a portion of the city budget. This will give power back to our communities that have been marginalized by overpolicing and let them decide how to improve their public health and safety. Everybody in Seattle wants everybody in our city to have access to resources they need to be safe and healthy. I believe that the plan put forth by these groups is the best way to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. The next three are Aaron Ettinger, Abra Sali, and Samuel Valentine. Aaron, good morning.
Good morning. My name is Erin, and I am a member of District 6. I am calling today to urge you to defund SPD by at least 50% this week. The Seattle Police Department is completely out of control, and Mayor Durkin and chief best responses are unacceptable. Their goal on Saturday was not to protect the public. Their goal was to exercise their power through attacking peaceful protesters with military weapons and instilling fear in our city. I also urge you, in addition to defunding SPD by 50%, to please support Decriminalize Seattle and King County Equity Now's four-point plan for community reinvestment of these funds to replace current 911 operations with a civilian-controlled system, scale up community-led solutions, fund a community-created roadmap to life without policing, and invest in housing for all. Please support defunding SPD and community reinvestment now.
Thank you very much. The next person is Avra, good morning.
Hello, my name is Abra Suley, and I am a resident of District 5 in North Seattle. I am speaking today on behalf of Never Again Seattle, a network of Jews and allies rooted in the lessons of Jewish history and tradition to organize in solidarity for safety and justice. We support King County Equity Now and Decriminalize Seattle's four-point proposal and demands to defund SPD by at least 50%, reinvest these funds in community-based solutions for health and safety, and release all protesters without charges. We thank the council for using your representative and institutional power to listen, learn from, trust, and invest in Black Seattleites' wisdom about what is necessary in our city to achieve agency and self-determination. We urge you to make Black Lives Matter true in our city by dedicating city resources to making it a reality. Thank you.
Thank you. Samuel, good morning.
Good morning. My name's Samuel. I'm a resident of District 4. You know, I think we've seen that the arguments against defund SPD really rest on the consent decree and fear tactics, but we saw the consent decree basically used to say, "Hey, let's have more tear gas to cause more harm rather than help." White gatekeepers have not created a better world at this point. Look at our city, look at our country. Alex Peterson, I really urge you to stop being a white gatekeeper. What do you know that the Black community doesn't know? And I yield my time. Thank you.
The next three people are Carly Gray, Sarah Scott, and Erica Irwin. Carly, good morning.
My name is Carly Gray. I'm a renter in District 4 and a member of Sunrise Seattle and UAW 4121. I am calling today to demand that every city council member sign on to the four-point plan by Decriminalize Seattle and King County Equity Now to defund SPD by at least 50%. Thank you to the council members that have. Unfortunately, my council member, Alex Peterson, has not. You all have an opportunity to write a new chapter in Seattle's story in which all residents have the ability to feel safe. Police are not here to keep us safe. Policing is a system of white supremacy that we've continuously funded at higher and higher rates year after year. They've targeted dissenters, Black and Brown residents, and medics and journalists repeatedly. They absolutely do not deserve the largest portion of our city budget, especially if they have already mismanaged their budget and spent more than they should have. Their mismanagement cannot be your scapegoat to let them keep our tax dollars. Do not wait, do not stall a demand that you defund SPD and follow the demands of King County Equity Now and Decriminalize Seattle. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah, good morning.
Good morning. I implore you to not defund the Seattle Police Department. Cutting funding does not make the city safer. I want to share with you three numbers: 2, 4, and 1.5. 2 is the number of minutes it took SPD to respond to the Jewish Federation shooting in 2006, and 10 minutes later, they had the suspect in custody. 4 is the number of minutes it took SPD to respond to the Cafe Racer shooting in 2012. 1.5 is the number of minutes it took for SPD to respond in 2010 to the mass shooting in West Seattle where a grandmother killed multiple members of her family. In each of these situations, can you imagine what those people were going through waiting for the police to arrive? Now imagine if you defund the police. How long then will those innocent victims have to wait? Please don't harm Seattle by defunding the police. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Erica, welcome. Just confirming, the next three will be Erica Irwin, Gabrielle Mahan, and Peter Hasagawa. Do we have Erica with us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, Erica. Please go ahead. Sorry, Erica, we can't hear you now. Do you want to try that again? Okay, Erica, we're having a hard time hearing you. If you call back in, we'll make sure that you get a chance to speak as soon as you dial back in.
I'm sorry.
Oh, there you are, Erica. Go ahead. We'll restart your time.
Okay. Me now, councilwoman?
I sure can, thanks.
Councilwoman, okay, thank you. Erica, District 2, I am not in favor of defunding police. Seattle City Council, you are irresponsibly not fully representing your constituents by making the reckless decision of defunding our police department 50%. You're allowing special interest groups to criminalize Seattle to drive decisions at the expense of our public safety. We are potentially, we are potentially going to be throwing millions of dollars into programs that we don't even know are going to be successful. Things like this should be, that, things like this should be voted on by the taxpayers. Lisa Herbold, you have 80,000, over 80,000 people in your district, West Seattle, that may lose their precinct. How, what is your plan for public safety if they lose the police precinct in West Seattle? Thank you.
Thank you, Erica. Gabrielle, welcome.
Hey, my name is Gabrielle, and I'm a tech worker and renter in District 3 residing near the intersection of Harvard and Thomas. I say that location with such specificity because that is the exact location that police pushed protesters to, all the way from 12th and Pine, a distance of over 12 blocks to my literal front door, through an overwhelming use of blast balls, pepper spray, and tear gas. This incident is a perfect encapsulation of why we must redirect funding from SPD and reinvest it in the community. The only tool the police has is force, and force alone cannot aid the community, and it cannot bring justice. We must defund SPD by at least 50% to redirect that funding into the community, and we must do it now. I urge the council not to wait until next year, not to tell the community that justice must yield to the arbitrary restrictions of the calendar year. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you. Peter Hasagawa, good morning.
Oh, wait, 13 seconds?
Oh, did you want to reclaim it? You're welcome to.
Oh, never, sorry. That's fine. I didn't know I was muted. Go ahead.
Okay, all right. Well, thanks for calling again. Good morning, Peter.
Good morning. This is Peter Hasagawa from MLK Labor, reading a statement from Paul Lou Kasek, the president of the Washington Federation of State Employees, Local 1488, who is an essential worker and has to be at work right now. Our local union represents custodians and trade people who work at the University of Washington, and we have a very large membership of workers of color. We are proud to support the call to defund the Seattle Police Department and to fund community investments that represent true health and safety. We urge the city council to support these changes. Black lives matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. The next three are Rebecca Levine, Keisha Elder, and Gillian Cogshaw. Rebecca, good morning.
Good morning. I'm Rebecca Levine in District 4. 2020 rebalancing should defund SPD by 50% and reinvest in community solutions for a more just and effective use of public dollars for public safety. To my district council member Peterson, now is the time to make good on your pledge to redirect police funding to community alternatives. Your blog said you're aligned with the four principles in the blueprint from Decriminalize Seattle and King County Equity Now, yet for weeks, you've resisted calls from hundreds of constituents like me to make specific commitments consistent with the significance of this pledge. I urge you to support 2020 budget amendments to defund SPD by 50% and to support reinvestments to scale up community services Black and Brown communities already know work. Make sure District 4 and this city stands on the right side of history.
Thank you. Keisha, good morning.
Hi, good morning. My name is Keisha Elder. I am a resident of District 3, and I'm calling to voice my support for defunding SPD by 50% at least this year and next year. Black and Brown communities have been neglected and mistreated for years due to racism and racist policies. It's important that you invest in Black communities and work with the community-led organizations that you are currently working with right now, like King County Equity Now and Decriminalize Seattle. Spog only cares about themselves. Prove that you care about Black lives by defunding SPD and working with Black and Brown communities. Thank you, and I yield my time.
Thank you. Gillian, good morning.
Hi, my name is Gillian Cogshaw, resident of D6. My friend Ash, resident of D7, was arrested at a protest on Saturday, but is too traumatized to comment, so I'll be doing so in her words. I spent 18 hours in jail, sleep deprived, and wrongfully transferred to Kent, was forced to sit in a concrete cell, handcuffed behind my back for five hours. I was hit with batons, shoves, dragged across gravel, and tackled by SPD. My charge of failure to disperse was dropped. The abuse I experienced and worse is not new for people of color. Black Lives Matter, defund SPD by 50% at least. Follow the lead of King County Equity Now and Decriminalize Seattle. I'll now be playing audio of Ash's abuse by SPD. Content warning for the audience: police violence.
Gillian, we weren't able to hear all of that. It just started, but it was pretty faint. I know that there was audio that folks wanted to share, so if you could send that to me, I will also share it around with folks, and if we can get that, feel free to send that directly to me at Teresa.Moski@Seattle.gov. Thank you, Gillian. The next three people are Kate Rubin, KC, and then Maximilian Coverne, who will be followed by two folks who we called on earlier, Ethan Mans and Sept Garnett. So those are the next three. Kate, good morning.
I think we just lost Kate.
Okay, no problem. Kate, if you do get the chance to call back in, we'll come back to you. KC, good morning.
Hi, can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, thanks.
Hi, my name is Cory. 80% of STD cops don't live here in Seattle. Their budget stifles resources into other cities. We need to stop pretending STD is the last line of defense. They can't even get through rape kit backlogs or answer a wellness check without killing someone in need of social services. Sorry, they got addicted to our money, but it's time to build our community and new services instead of funding cop wealth. We need to dwell on Seattle poverty, the source of crime, while millions leach into STD paychecks and pensions into their city's taxes and their white schools. Stop saying the Karens and gentrifiers with yard signs, they're not outside getting gas for what they believe. 50% of the remaining STD budget to Black communities at least. We need to do it now. Thank you.
Thank you. Maximilian, welcome.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, good morning.
Hi, so basically, I have a few things to say. If the budget is not cut by $85 million, if you think what you've seen recently is bad, it will only get worse, and I want you to think about why we've only heard from white people calling saying that they support SPD. So I want you to think about that, and I do not yield the rest of my time. I want this time to think about it and find-
I'm a District 2 resident, a Black District 2 resident, and I'm calling in support of defunding SPD by 50% and reinvesting in communities. Our communities are safe, we deserve to be safe. Public safety comes from investing in communities, not policing them. Safety comes from investments in housing and land ownership that builds wealth, opportunity, and economic security and stability. Safety comes from investments in equitable education for our children and youth, in interventions that cultivate their brilliance and honor their identity. The Seattle Police Department has failed to keep us safe. They have not, will not, and do not prevent violence from occurring in our community. We know this because we're not safe from violence today. Seattle's Black community faces tremendous violence and loss right now. Police overpatrol our neighborhoods and respond to violence by using violence. They do not prevent it. Police create and exacerbate our violence. On Monday, Seattle City Council has the opportunity to be on the right side of history and vote to defund the police by at least 50% and reinvest that community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ethan, for calling back in, and then we'll hear from Sept Garnett and Kate Rubin. Sept, good morning. Hi, Sept, can you hear me? Yes, now I can. Please go ahead.
Okay. Hi, my name is Sept Garnett, and I live in District 4, so this comment goes to Alex Peterson. I want you to know that your district believes that Black lives matter, that the police institution works to uphold white supremacy, and that we will support you on defunding SPD by 50% at least and reinvesting into Black communities. You said yourself that we need actions, not just words, so please act. Don't wait and see, just do it, or we'll vote you out. Thank you.
And do we have Kate with us? Hi, Kate, good morning. Kate, could you wait one, just one second, Kate, if you don't mind? Could we tee up the timer one more time, just for my benefit, folks, for my tea? Kate, you can go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Kate Rubin. I'm the executive director of D Seattle, and I am joined by Dee Powers, who is one of our board members. We are calling in support of defunding SPD by at least 50%. Black and Indigenous people of color experience homelessness and violence at the hands of the police at disproportionate rates. Investing in Black and Brown communities rather than funding their oppressors is the first step towards a more equitable Seattle. People experiencing homelessness, including myself, deserve to be treated with respect, not a nuisance to be swept away. Sweeps are a violation of CDC pandemic recommendations, and removing police from the NAV team is a good start in reducing that police budget. Sergeant Zero alone earned a salary of over $331,000 last year. How many people could that help? Is that not enough to build more first-choice shelters such as tiny house villages? I yield my time.
Thank you very much. The next three people are Alex Emery, Jill Anderson, and Steve Downey. Alex, good morning.
Hi, I'm Alex. I'm a homeowner in District 2. I stand in solidarity with the Everyday March, Decriminalize Seattle, and King County Equity Now. I want to voice my full support for defunding the Seattle Police Department's remaining budget for 2020 by 50% at least, approximately $85 million, and diverting those funds specifically to Black communities. Pay the fee. This action should be taken immediately and without negotiation. It doesn't matter if they've overspent. In fact, if they can't manage a budget appropriately, that's all the more reason to cut their budget immediately. Black communities need funding more than they need to police, full stop. Don't compromise on funding Black communities. I want to thank council member Morales for centering racial equity and working with county community members to find a better solution, and I'd also like to thank her for coming out of her home and speaking with the Everyday March who visited her over the weekend. If all of our council members were as responsive and respectful to their constituents, our city would be a much better place. Peterson, Juarez, I'm looking at you. If Black lives matter, prove it. Defund SPD, fund Black communities, free all protesters, shut down the u-
Thank you. Jill Anderson, welcome.
Hi, my name is Jill. I live in District 2. The SPD budget must be cut permanently and annually by at least 50%. This money must be returned to Seattle's most overpoliced and underfunded communities through direct and organizational aid. Black, Indigenous, Chicanos, and homeless folks need and deserve these funds more than anyone should make half a million dollars a year to brutalize the neighbors. Also, no new youth jail. Do you really think it's more violent to skip school, or smoke weed, or just be poor than to forcibly lock children up in inhumane conditions? Like, how does that make sense? I yield my time.
Thank you. Steve, welcome. Hi, do we have Steve with us? Okay, Steve, if you can hear us and you're not on the line, please do call back in, Mr. Steve. Oh, hi? I can hear you now. Great, we'll restart your time.
All right, thank you very much. I'm a resident of Greenwood, and I would like to say as criminals, organized crimes and gangs are not defunding. They are already carving up Seattle in anticipation of a 50% police reduction. And those of you city councilmen who have been threatened by these nuts, these nuts are now going to feel emboldened because they're going to carry out their threats against your family and not feel, not feel a problem. The biggest industry that's going to love a 50% reduction is the gun industry. Gun ownership in Seattle will explode, which increases school shootings, suicides, and domestic killings. And last but not least, Camden, New Jersey fixed this problem. Why don't you get somebody out from Camden to help you resolve it rather than slashing the police button to 50%? There are now 60% reduction in police criminal, and the police and the public can never have better relations. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Michael Andrew, followed by William Bullock and Rebecca Finks. Michael, welcome.
Good morning, thank you. I'm Mike Andrew. I'm a resident of District Three, and I'm a member of Pride at Work, an LGBTQ labor organization. During the time that I've been a labor activist, I've seen seven mayors, five police chiefs, and four different presidents of the Seattle Police Officers Guild. These people, all of them, have done nothing but talk, reform, reform, reform. But when it gets down to street-level police action, it's always the same brutality, the same violence, the same disregard for black, Indigenous, and people of color's lives. If you want to do something to dismantle systemic racism and policing, you have a chance to do it now. Defund SPD and work together with community-based organizations to build an entirely new system in its place. Thanks.
Thank you, Mike. William, welcome.
Hi, my name is William Bullock. I'm a resident of Queen Anne. I support defunding SPD because they have consistently shown over the last two months that they view the citizens of Seattle with open, violent contempt. No amount of reform can truly change people who don't want to be reformed. And if their protection of us is dependent on never truly being held to account, then they are not a law enforcement agency. They are a mafia protection racket in nice blue uniforms. And frankly, to ask us to keep living in the same house as them after the behavior that we have witnessed is akin to coercing someone who has been brutally beaten by their spouse into going back to their abuser because they've promised to be good this time. It's indefensible. Please, defund SPD by at least 50% and reinvest in BIPOC communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Rebecca, welcome.
Hello, I am Rebecca Finkus. I work freely high with the Tiny House Program and live in District Two. I urge you all to support efforts to defund the navigation team and reinvest in community-led organizations that prioritize healing and value-based care rather than criminalization of homelessness through sweeps. We heist in a letter this morning formalizing the stance or request to restructure the referral process for tiny house villages away from the navigation team. It is critical that we refuse to be complicit in trauma-affected people experiencing homelessness. Please invest in community partners that will more appropriately support our unhoused neighbors and furthermore make tiny house villages more accessible, inclusive, and equitable. Thank you.
Thank you. The next three people are London Judge Madeline Cooley and Gavin Bradler. London, welcome.
Hello, councilmembers. I'm a homeowner in Ballard in District Six, and I'm calling on all of you to meet community demands outlined by Decriminalize Seattle, to defund Seattle Police by at least 50%. Defunding SPD is necessary to protect black and Indigenous lives from police violence in our city. Incremental reforms and changes to policing have not worked. While SPD's response to Black Lives Matter protesters have been abhorrent, it's not new or unexpected. Despite numerous reforms implemented under the consent decree and initiative 940, Seattle Police continue to criminalize, brutalize, and kill BIPOC residents like Sherlina Lyles and Sean Fur without facing any consequences. This is completely unacceptable. We cannot wait until more black people are murdered before we make real change happen. We need to defund SPD now.
Thank you. Madeline, welcome.
Hi, my name is Madeline, and I'm a resident of District Seven. I am calling on my councilmember, Andrew Lewis, to fully commit to defunding SPD by 50% this year. An email you sent yesterday, you stated we need to build in new models before cutting the budget. We cannot afford to wait, nor would we have the funding for new programs unless we defund SPD now. It is unacceptable that on Monday, the City Council passed a transit benefit district package that cuts funding for the services many Seattle residents depend on, despite calls from community. Why can we cut transit without hesitation? And why are we only concerned about gaps in service when it comes to police? Public safety includes access to safe and reliable transportation. Public safety includes housing, healthcare, law enforcement does not keep us safe. Defund SPD, invest in the community, stop the sweeps, and remove Mayor Jenny Durkin. Thank you.
The next three people are Gavin Bradler, Elliot Bailey, and Brendan McGovern. Gavin, good morning.
Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, city councilmembers. My name is Gavin Bradler, and I would like to affirm my support of the proposed amendment to defund SPD. As a student in District Six, I believe it is imperative that we defund the Seattle Police Department by 50% and no less. Let me tell you, it comes at no surprise to me which city councilmembers have withheld their support for this amendment. And to this, I say that while the veto-proof majority is already established is heartening, this amendment must be supported unilaterally across all Seattle districts to help repair the damages that North End interests have had against districts in the South End, specifically black communities. Listen to the organizers at King County Equity Now and Decriminalize Seattle for their plans to divest the funds into education and community-based solutions. I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Elliot, good morning.
I'm a... Hi, good morning. My name is Elliot Bailey. I'm a resident of West Seattle. I first of all want to deconstruct the false narrative that protesters are separate from constituents. All of these people that have called in to ask you to defund SPD today are the people that voted you in from all over the city. When you do defund SPD, I want you to make sure you get that money to black communities, not to communities. And that's 86 mil, not 20%, not any less. Half of their budget. Thank you.
The next person is Brendan, welcome.
I'm a substitute music teacher with Seattle Public Schools. I support councilmember Sawant's People's Budget Amendment. I'm also a member of Socialist Alternative. Last night, I was among the crowd of protesters, and I was hit by tear gas and a flashbang grenade that was thrown directly at me. And I've seen even worse, horrible wounds and welts on protesters due to rubber bullets, pepper spray, and numerous other tactics that SPD and potentially federal forces have used disproportionately on us. I'm Alice Berry with Where We Converge Media. A journalist was hit in the back. We are demanding that you defund SPD, and you do it now because it is clear that we do not keep us safe. We need to end the navigation team's sweeps of homeless encampments, fund renter defense, and not cut public education childcare.
Thank you, Brendan. Kanti Mahi, followed by Mer Joyce and Heather Ede. Ede, apologies for that. Kanti, good morning.
Hi, good morning. I'm a volunteer with the Coalition of Seattle Indian Americans. We follow the leadership of King County Equity Now and Decriminalize Seattle. The ACLU tweeted last night, "The evidence is pretty clear. SPD does not want to be held accountable for police brutality. Clearly identifiable medics, journalists, and photographers were attacked. Defund SPD by 50%. Divert the money to community-run health and safety programs. Release all protesters, drop all charges, and fire Mayor Durkin and Police Chief Bass. This is an emergency. It's atrocious that you sit in the comfort of your home week after week while the people who elected you to serve them face violent atrocities by the mayor and cops." Thank you.
Mer, good morning.
Hi, this is Mayor Joyce She-Her. I'm the founder of the participatory design studio Do Big Good and a constituent of Councilmember Strauss. Thank you for your support. In support of the 50% SPD cut, I'd like to read a quote by author Edgar Villanueva, which I've edited for time. Colonialism, white supremacist organizational practices seem inevitable because they were so universally adopted, but they were designed choices that means other choices are available. I commend the council for resisting the abuse tactic of fear use by SPAG and taking practical steps to redesign the safe institutions of our city. Thank you.
Heather, good morning.
Hi, my name is Heather Ede. I live in District Six and want to comment on funding for policing in the rebalancing package. I support the four-point plan by Decriminalize Seattle and King County Equity Now. We must pair defunding of SPD by 50% with reinvestment of that money into community-led health, housing, and public safety solutions. Let's have qualified professionals, not armed police, respond on one call about homelessness, addiction, and mental health issues. Policing does not prevent crime, but strategic community investment can. We must act with urgency because justice for our black community members is long overdue. Thank you.
Thank you. Marlena Bennett, followed by Cassie Sabani and Allison Ong. Marlena?
Hi, I'm a homeowner from D Two and a nurse. I support the demands of Decriminalize Seattle Coalition. Cut SPD's budget by at least 50% and reallocate those funds to generate true public safety informed by our community needs, not just white people's needs, and release protesters arrested during this uprising without charges. These cuts should include freeze hiring, remove the Office of Collaborative Policing, transfer out of SPD control the crisis intervention response, 911 dispatch, traffic, parking enforcement, Office of Police Accountability, and Office of Emergency Management, eliminate funds for recruitment and retention, including bonuses for new hires, new equipment spending, and contracts with private firms that defend SPD and the city against police misconduct. Thank you.
Thank you. Cassie, good morning.
My name is Cassie Sabania, and I'm a domestic violence survivor. City council, you need to remember that there are vulnerable people in our community that don't have the privilege like you do to live in wealthy neighborhoods or have a job in a pandemic. If the police department gets defunded, I have no doubt that you will hire your own private security for your neighborhood, but what about your constituents that don't have that advantage? What about the women that are strangled by their partners in front of their children? Or the children that are raped by predators in their neighborhood? Or the young men that have been killed in shootings throughout the city within the last two months? What about them? The police are at the forefront of responding to these incidents, and yet without any experience, you've decided what's best for the people in the community. Do not defend the Seattle Police Department. You can be against police brutality and still support the police at the same time. I yield.
Hi, my name is Allison Ong. I'm a landscape architect and a renter in District Four. The policing system we currently have in place systematically punishes black and Indigenous people, and that is unacceptable. Please vote to defund SPD by 50% now, by $85 million, and invest responsibly in community-based solutions such as restorative justice and affordable housing initiatives. City executive and SPD salaries should be capped at no more than $150,000 a year. I think that we can design and implement a better system that better serves our black and brown neighbors. I yield.
Thank you, Allison. And Max, followed by Max Rapport, followed by Samya Trupathy and Nicole Grant. Good morning, Max.
Morning. My name is Max Rapport, and I'm a mental health counselor and resident of District Three. I'm calling to express my support in defunding SPD by at least 50%, including $85 million in cuts for the rest of 2020. I'd like to applaud the seven members of the council who made the pledge to defund by 50%, but also let them know that we're watching and that we won't accept any half measures or budgetary flights of hand and will not allow you to hide behind process or fear tactics by SPD and the mayor. Councilmember Strauss and Lewis, you were elected last year by a coalition of younger, more diverse, progressively-minded Seattleites who rejected your Amazon back opponents. Those same voters will place their support elsewhere next time around if you fail to be courageous. They won't forget, and history won't forget what you do in these next two weeks. Thank you.
Next person is Samya.
Hi, my name is Shomya Trupathy. I'm the Director of Policy and Civic Engagement at Asian Counseling and Referral Service, calling to express our agency's support for Decriminalize Seattle and King County Equity Now's demands to defund SPD by at least 50% and reinvest in community. As an agency serving API immigrants and refugees, we know that it's holistic, culturally responsive, and accessible social service and programs that keep our communities safe and healthy, not the police. SPD has responded to black, Indigenous people with violence, protesters with violence, and our unhoused community with violence. We were sent, with the recent removal of encampments in the CID, we have already seen political attempts to scapegoat our local API community as a model minority. We resist and resent this notion and firmly stand in solidarity with the asks of black organizers to defund SPD. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicole, good morning.
I'm Nicole Grant with MLK Labor, and this is my first time testifying on a policing issue since SPAG was removed from our organization. After the murder of George Floyd, our Labor Council passed a resolution stating that systematic racism exists in the City of Seattle Police Department and that this problem must be immediately addressed to protect BIPOC individuals in our community from harm. It also demands that the city reexamine all budget choices to prioritize non-law enforcement investments in the community. I believe that's what you're here to do, and we thank you.
Thank you very much, Nicole. The next three are Brent McFarland, Jamie Patek, and then Khan Lee. Good morning, Brent.
Hello, council. Hi, I'm Brent McFarland. I live in District Five, and I'm calling as a member of Puget Sound Advocates for Retirement Action. This is a group that's been fighting for over a quarter century, multigenerational, and anti-racist work. We are in solidarity with the Black Lives Matter movement in demanding that the city defund the Seattle Police Department by at least 50% for the rest of this year and going forward, reallocate those funds to community-led health and safety systems, release protesters arrested during this uprising, and drop the census, and support the King County Equity Now demands for giving spaces and land back to black-led community organizations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please go ahead. Do we have Jamie with us?
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me? Thank you. I'm Jamie Wilson. I'm Jamie Wilson, a District Three resident and English instructor at North Seattle College. I'm speaking today as a member of AFT Seattle Community Colleges Local 1789. We have over 550 members, and we support the plan put forward by Decriminalize Seattle and King County Equity Now to defund the SPD by 50% and reinvest in community, starting now with the current rebalancing process. I'm speaking to you today because our students and members are under attack. The current system blocks our access to housing, healthcare, and employment while at the same time targeting us with police violence. Sherlina Lyles was a North Seattle College student. When Seattle police laughed at her in their car and then killed her in front of her children, please do not continue to fund the violent policing that starves, cages, and kills our students. Break this cycle now. Follow Decriminalize Seattle.
Thank you, Jamie. Let's go back up to Khan Lee. Thank you for calling back in.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Sure can, thanks. Go ahead.
Okay. I'm Khan Vila, and I'm with Uprooted and Rising Seattle. We support food sovereignty for all, especially those most vulnerable in our community. Please meet the demands put forward by Decriminalize Seattle and King County Equity Now to defund SPD by 50%, reinvest in community-based solutions to health and safety, eliminate transfer SPD functions, and reduce SPD's budget across the board. As a document immigrant, I have faced homelessness, hunger, and unemployment, yet I could not protest or rely on calling 911 for help due to the fear that I would be treated with contempt and violence by the police simply because I'm an immigrant and a queer person of color. Because the pandemic is hitting communities of black, Indigenous, people of color, immigrants, refugees, and LGBTQ the hardest, we must divest from the police force and invest in community health, especially in those most vulnerable.
Thank you. The next three people are Amy Lung, Aaron Matthew, and Steve Leonard. I want to give folks a heads up just before Amy speaks. We do have quite a few people that we are not going to be able to get to if we keep it at 45 seconds. So I want to give a heads up. After these three, we will go down to 30 seconds, which is not ideal, but that'll allow us to get as many folks in as possible. Amy, please go ahead. Do we have Amy with us?
Amy is here.
Okay, Amy, if you can hear us, we cannot hear you. Let's try one more time. All right, Amy, I cannot hear you. I'm sorry. If you call back in, we will come back to you. The next person is Aaron Matthew.
Hi, can you hear me?
Sure can, thanks, Aaron.
Hi, my name is Aaron Matthew, and I live in Alex Peterson's Fourth District on the stolen... stolen land of the Duamish people. I'm in full support of the five demands of the Everyday March, as well as the Seattle People's Budget. The five demands are: defunding the SPD by at least 50%, redistributing those funds to Black communities, freeing all protesters without charges, no new youth jail, and that Jenny Durkin must resign. As his constituent, I am highly disappointed in Councilmember Alex Peterson for not endorsing defunding SPD by at least 50%. I call on him to stand with this plan that has come from decades of work by Black and Brown communities. If you say Black Lives Matter, prove it by defunding the SPD and reinvesting that money in Black communities. Police do not prevent crime. They do not keep us safe. Healthy communities with well-funded social services keep us safe. Black Lives Matter, defund SPD now. No delays.
Thank you very much. The next speaker, please go ahead.
My name is Stevie Leonard. I do not support defunding the Seattle Police Department, and doing so on your part will be reckless and dangerous to the citizens of Seattle. It is common sense that if you have an area in a city void of police, crime will move in. This city council has shown no transparency or competency with regards to being good stewards of public money. You have spent $200 million on homelessness and repeat offenders, and the problems have gotten worse. Defunding the Seattle Police Department will only make this city more dangerous for everyone. SPD, along with the DOJ, have made this police department a model for police agencies all across this country. Defunding SPD will destroy all the gains made by SPD and the DOJ.
Thank you, Stevie. Please do send in the rest of your comments. Gabrielle, welcome.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Gabby, and I'm a student and a renter in District 6. I'm here to add my voice to the call to defund SPD by at least 50%, invest that money into Black communities, and drop charges against all protesters. We cannot reward SPD for blowing through millions of dollars in their violent and outsized response to the recent protests by delaying on the promise of defunding SPD by 50%. To the seven councilmembers that have already committed to defund SPD by 50%, including my councilmember Dan Strauss, don't SPAG scare you into breaking your promise to the city. Delay is the tactic of oppression. We need action now. Now is the time to prove your moral courage. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. And just want to confirm, did we get Amy back on the line? Amy Lung?
Affirmed.
Okay, Amy, if you're available...
Hello, can you hear me?
I can now, yes. Please go ahead.
Perfect. All right. Thanks. Good morning. My name is Amy, and I'm with Apollo, the Asian Pacific American Labor Alliance, CIO Chapter. We are speaking in support of defunding the Seattle Police. We stand in solidarity with Black workers and community calling for a change. We believe in a more equitable world where workers are respected and valued. We cannot see that when our people, Black and Brown workers and community, are disproportionately dying at the hands of police and suffering from institutional racism. During strikes by trade unions of working people, the historical roles of police have been to protect the property of the bosses. They do not stand in solidarity with the working class. Fund should be reallocated from the police and invested in building Black and Brown communities such as programs to create pipelines to good union jobs, benefit, dignity, and respect. Fund needs to be reinvested into the community. Black Lives Matter. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Council colleagues, we have gone just about 90 minutes. I would like to extend public comment for another 90 minutes to get through as many folks as possible. Again, we have gone over 100 speakers so far, and there's over 300 signed up, so doing 30 seconds is not ideal, but it helps us get through. If there's no objection, public comment will be extended. Hearing no objection, public comment period is extended for another 90 minutes. Emily Murphy, followed by Bob Purcell and Jonah Bitten. Thank you for calling in, and apologies for the short timeframe. We're going to try and get everybody heard. So Emily, thanks for calling.
Good morning. I'm Emily Murphy, and I live in District 4, and I was born and raised in District 5. I call on CMs Peterson and Juarez to be on the right side of history and defund SPD by at least 50% now and reinvest those funds in Black communities. My mother has lived in the same modest one-bedroom apartment in Lake City for over 35 years, where she raised me and now can't afford to live as a taxpayer worker. Where my white mother struggles to live, Black mothers like Charlene Lyles are dying at the hands of SPD and our racist budget. Alex Peterson, don't...
Thank you, Emily. Bob, welcome.
Hello, can you hear me?
Sure can. Thanks, Bob.
Yes, this is Bob Purcell. I'm a participant at Cher's Maple Leaf Shelter. I've been homeless here for seven years and feel fortunate to have found my way into this organization. Might sound improbable, that a group of homeless individuals could pull together and manage themselves for mutual benefit. This has been my experience with Cher, shown itself to be a functional and cost-effective stopgap for those waiting, generally in vain, for affordable housing. After 30 years, the notion of homeless folks banding together to solve their problems should no longer be considered radical, but we have proven our system works. I hope you...
Thank you very much, Bob. Jonah Bitten?
Hello, this is Jonah from District 7. I'm calling to express support for defunding SPD by at least 50% and to reallocate those funds to Black communities, including Black education, public health, and housing. We need all $85 million to be invested in Black communities, not the measly $3 million King County Equity Now proposed. If you don't support defunding SPD by 50%, you support police brutality against your constituents. Alex Peterson, Deborah Juarez, I'm looking at you. Choose the right side of history. Andrew Lewis, my counsel, you as well. Support Everyday Marshall Mans and recall Jenny Durkin. I yield my time.
Thank you very much. The next three are T. Kike, Ezra Delson, and Jackson Peachey. T, good morning. Okay, looking for T.
Hello, can you hear me?
Now we can, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. ACAB, Black Lives Matter. Hello, my name is T. Sayak, and I'm a resident of District 3. I believe defunding by at least 50% and subsequently abolishing SPD and reinvesting in community is necessary because police reform is simply not possible. What do we reform to? SPD is operating as it was intended, to control, abuse, and terrorize Black and Brown communities. The police do not protect us. The police do not deter crime.
Please continue.
I urge councilmembers to support Decriminalize Seattle and King County Equity Now's four-point plan for community and reinvestment of those funds to replace current 911 operations with civilian-controlled systems, scale up community-led solutions, fund a community career...
Thank you very much, T. Ezra, welcome.
Thank you, councilmember. My name is Ezra Delson. I'm a resident of District 3 and have been teaching preschool in South Lake Union for the last two years. I support defunding the Seattle Police Department by at least 50%. I apologize if my voice is hoarse as I'm still experiencing the after effects of being teargassed by SPD for simply standing and holding an umbrella, specifically Dan Strauss. I'm calling on you as a fellow Jew to stand by your commitment and practice tikkun alam to defund SPD and show Seattle that we, as Jewish people, will not stand for the horrific violence the Seattle Police Department is enacting. Thank you very much. I yield my time.
Thank you. Jackson, welcome.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, great, thank you. My name is Jackson Peach, like the fruit. I'm a resident of District 4. I'd like to express my support for the demands of Everyday March and Decrim Seattle and King County Equity Now in defunding SPD by at least 50% for the remaining year and investing in Black communities, and amnesty for protesters, no new youth jail, and Jenny Durkin's resignation. If the reformed SPD is still resisting accountability for murder and abuse of protesters, then those reforms haven't worked. It's that simple. And reject the dichotomy, reject the false dichotomy of the idea that we have no safety without police. There are other plans in place to improve society. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you. Catherine Dawson, Violet Lavati, and Sam Sumper. Catherine, good morning.
Hi, good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
My name is Catherine Dawson. I'm a resident of District 3, calling to voice my support for defunding the Seattle Police Department by at least 50%. The police exist to protect power and property. They disproportionately harm people of color, especially Black and Indigenous people, and they've killed 23 people since the 2012 consent decree. As a teacher, I'm outraged by the funding that we devote to policing. The city budget reflects our priorities, and we're investing in punishment rather than community, housing, and education. As Officer Mike Spill mentioned in his comment, 85% of the police budget is salaries, yet many police officers earn three times as much as a teacher with a PhD and 15 years of service. As a survivor, I know that policing does not keep us safe or provide justice. We need to invest in community-led solutions like restorative justice and alternative...
Thank you. Violet, welcome.
Hi, thank you, councilmember. My name is Violet Lavati. I'm with the, I'm the Executive Director of the Tenant Union, and I'm calling that some of the funding to invest in tenant organizing and also eviction defense fund. I'm imploring you to fund this because we're going to see a lot of evictions in the coming months, and putting, investing this back into our community will help. It will help a lot of our communities, majority of them are Black people. And so I'm calling on councilmembers to fund eviction, defense fund, and tenant...
Thank you very much. Sam, good morning.
My name is Sam Sumper, and I'm a renter in D3 and Vice President of UAW 4121, the Union of 6,000 Academic Student Employees and Postdocs at UW. I urge the city council to immediately begin defunding the Seattle Police Department as part of the 2020 budget rebalancing. Seattle's police budget has grown 68% in the last 10 years, but more police has not meant more safety. It has meant more violence against BIPOC communities. We must instead prioritize true community safety by investing in housing, community-run crisis intervention, violence prevention, and violence interruption. These investments can and must begin this year. City Council should also fund organizing by renters and should end sweeps of our homeless neighbors, and should renegotiate collective bargaining agreements with cities' police unions to fully realize the 2017 accountability ordinance.
Thank you very much. Sarah Starman, followed by Eva Metz and Kimberly Gonzalez. Sarah, good morning.
Hi, my name is Sarah Starman, and I'm a resident in Timmy Ridge, District 6. Like almost everyone else here today, I'm urging city council to defund the police by 50%. If we want to make our city safe, we need to invest in affordable housing, education, community safety, and directly in Black communities, not in a militarized police who make hundreds of thousands of dollars in salaries and use weapons of war in our neighborhoods. I'm asking all of city council to step up and protect our communities, or step aside so we can vote for someone else who will. Thank you.
Eva, Eva, good morning.
I'm a member of Socialist Al... Hi, my name is Eva Metz. I'm a member of Socialist Alternative and part of the People's Budget Movement, and as so many have said, we need to defund the SPD by at least 50%, starting with this year, the rest of the year's budget, and we can't afford to wait. This will create $85 million to invest in Black and Brown working-class communities. Some politicians are saying we need agreement from SPAG first, and this is ridiculous. Will these same politicians get agreement from public sector workers before pushing mass layoffs and cutting important services like transit? We can't take more time. We need to build a movement to do this, and as a start to addressing gross injustices and racist policing.
Thank you. Kimberly, good morning.
Good morning. Hello, my name is Kimberly Gonzalez. I am a homeowner in District 2, and I want to thank my councilmember Tammy Morales for being on the right side of history. I am calling to provide my strongest support to defund the Seattle Police Department by at least 50% and to reinvest that money directly into specifically Black communities. The way that SPD is currently operating and has operated in the past makes me afraid and does not make me feel safe. If Black Lives Matter, then prove it and defund the SPD. Thank you.
Thank you. The next three are Leah Jarvik, Jacob Stenzel, and Megan Matthew. I believe we may have heard from her before. Leah, please go ahead.
Hello? Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Go ahead, Leah.
Hi, my name is Leah Jarvik, and I'm an educator and a resident of District 7. I'm calling to urge city council to defund SPD by at least 50% and reinvest in community. This is essential to protecting Black lives in our community from a system which habitually tears them down. Some people dismiss the budget cut, saying that it would leave Seattle unprotected, but nobody is asking that public safety systems disappear. We want those systems to be changed to protect everyone rather than targeting our Black community members. We've seen that the changes that have been made in the past have not worked, and we won't stand by it anymore. This is an opportunity for real change to be canceled. Please do not betray our trust. Do not waste this moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Jacob, good morning.
I'm Jacob from District 7, and I support reducing the SPD budget by at least 50% and reinvesting in BIPOC communities. Here are a few names I didn't hear on Monday. Charlene Lyles, Sean Fur, John T. Williams. These are the people SPD murdered and legally got away with. SPD has continually lied about their role in protecting the public. Rashana Weber was killed in Cal Anderson in 2019, and SPD did jack to stop that from happening. I hear a 50% cut would result in layoffs. This is by design. We need to weed out the kids with power struggles, or power complexes. Paying for officers to kill and maim you is a bad investment. We don't need to reimagine the police. This isn't Disney World, and we're not imaginers. Also, F.L. protesters, no youth jails, and Jenny Durkin resign. And also, leave Keshama Sawant alone. She speaks for us. Come on.
Thank you very much. Erin Mendel, Eric Agaman, and Carol Thompson. Erin, good morning.
Hi, my name is Erin Mendel. I'm a lifelong District 6 member, and I'm calling in support of defunding the police by 50%. And I'd also like to amplify the plan that King County Equity Now and Decriminalize Seattle, the four-point plan that they put together. I was at the protest this Saturday, and it was absolutely disgusting what the cops did to my friends and the thousands of people that were there. They beat people, they threw flashbangs. But what's more disgusting is the tear that they have put in Black and Indigenous communities since the inception of police and the white supremacy that they uphold. And we need to realize that they've killed people for countless years, like Charlene Lyles, Sean Fur, John T. Williams, and we need to def...
Thank you, Erin. Please send in the remainder of your comments. Eric, good morning.
Good morning. Hi, my name is Eric Ajma with PJ Sausage in support of defunding SPD by at least 50% and reinvesting in community. And history has proven that policing is not the best solution for providing public safety, especially in Black and Brown communities. And police violence-related deaths averages over 1,000 annually, and SPD is not an exception. This is a chronic challenge which requires bold and creative solutions by addressing the root causes of the problem. And it's time for our city to reimagine public safety, so please invest in community solutions to help our safety. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I just want to let folks know from IT, RealBeFree has logged back in, so we are going to go back to him in just a minute, if they're available. And the next person that I had called is Megan Matthew and then Carol Thompson. Megan, hello.
Hi, I'm Megan Matthew, calling from the 4th District, urging Alex Peterson and all of the councilmembers to defund SPD by at least 50% and reinvest those funds in Black communities. If you want to see a healthier future for our city, which all of you should, you'll invest in affordable housing, education, and health services rather than a police department that spends millions using chemical weapons against its citizens during a global pandemic and recession that disproportionately affects Black and Brown communities. The police department is not only failing to keep our communities safe, but actively causing violence against them. And 40% of police officers commit domestic violence. Black Lives Matter, defund the police. Please take action and be on the right side of history. We don't want to see more violence committed against our community members, and it's up to you to change that. Please take...
Thank you very much. Carol, good morning.
Good morning. Thank you so much, councilmember. You're doing a great job. My name is Carol Thompson. I live in Wallingford, District 4. I'm a pre-K teacher, which means I teach four- and five-year-olds how to love themselves and take care of each other. I am on this call today to voice my support for defunding the Seattle Police Department. I'm for defunding the police by at least 50%, if not more. That money should be used to take care of our community, and by "community," I mean the people of our community, and it should not go to buying more and more ammunition and tanks and paying people to uphold a racist system.
Carol, thank you for your comments. Please send in the remainder of your message, because I believe you had one more sentence there. Let's go to RealBeFree, and then we'll continue with the list.
Real is not there.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry about that. Oh, okay. I'm sorry about that. Real, if you do call back in, we will try to get to you. Will Peterson, followed by Teresa Homan and Madison Walker. Will, good morning.
Good morning, council members. My name is Will Peterson and I'm an executive board member of United Food and Commercial Workers Local 21. More than 10,000 UFCW 21 members live and work in Seattle. I'm here today to ask that you vote to immediately begin defunding the Seattle Police Department as part of the 2020 budget rebalance. I know that some people are fearful about what the future might look like, but I can tell you that many of us are fearful every day because of the system that is now in place. It's time to take a real step towards a future where black lives are valued and protected. And that means freeing up money that is currently funding an oversized police department and instead funding real community safety. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time. Teresa. Hi, Teresa, can you hear us? Teresa, hey, can you hear us? Okay, we'll come back to Teresa. Madison Walker, then Clara Lazar and Michael Frost. Madison, good morning.
Hi, my name is Madison Walker. Hi, my name is Madison Walker and I live and work downtown Seattle. Please do not defund the police. Downtown Seattle is not safe. I am constantly harassed, assaulted, and burglarized. One year ago today, the city council acknowledged the need for more police because they are grossly understaffed and a knee-jerk reaction to a demonstration. You're willing to recklessly further compromise public safety. Look at the number of 911 calls that go unanswered. Look at the spike in crime and gun violence currently taking place in our city. We definitely need reform, but please do not defund the police. Do not defund the police. Take on cahoots instead and have them help the police department.
Thank you very much. Clara, welcome.
Hi, my name's Clara Lazar. I'm a renter in the Ravenna neighborhood of Alex Peterson's 4th District, where I've also lived my entire life. So this statement goes out to Councilmember Peterson in particular. And I'm calling, like many other people, to speak in support of defunding SPD by at least 50% and reinvesting that money based on King County Equity Now's four-point plan for community reinvestment. We've shown that reform does not work. SPD continues to use force against peaceful protesters. We need to defund the SPD instead and-
Thank you very much. Michael, good morning.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Defunding the police is a terrible idea. The most basic purpose of a government is to provide safety and security for the members of society. Defunding the police will result in more violent crime. But it just, it would just be the default. The, all of these good ideas of greater transparency, having the police live in the communities that they police are excellent ideas, but it requires more money, not less. Thank you.
Thank you. And before we go on, is Teresa still available? Teresa Homan.
Yeah.
Hi, Teresa, can you hear us?
Hi, my name, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, thanks, Teresa. Please go ahead.
Oh. Okay. My name is Teresa Homan and I'm the Tiny House Village Program Manager at Lehigh. We want to thank you for your funding approved last week for more permanent housing and more tiny house villages. I stand with others who think we should defund the NAV team and instead fund organizations like the Urban League, Chief Seattle Club, Seattle Indian Center, and Reach and others who do humane outreach in a way that involves building relationships and staying involved with villagers and shelter inhabitants long-term. Thanks. I yield my time.
Thank you, Teresa. The next three are Tyler Souvenirs.
Yeah, that's me.
Hi, Tyler. Sorry about your last name. Then followed by Christina Schmitz and Micah Flack. Tyler, please go ahead.
Yeah, my name is Tyler Soverens. I'm standing in solidarity with the Everyday March. I live in District 4. I've lived here for five years. I'm following up with Alex Peterson on the several emails and phone calls I've made that he hasn't responded to. Alex, the citizens in your district want SPD to be funded by 50% at least and will not accept anything less. These funds need to be reallocated to black communities for health services, housing, and education. Police do not keep us safe. SPD has doubled down on intimidation tactics and brutalization of the citizens of Seattle whenever they're given the opportunity. You need to stand up and support the people in your district that are asking you to do that.
Oh, shit, they just called me.
Oh, hi, Christina. We can hear you.
Hi, oh, sorry. I'm in another meeting. Anyway-
That's okay. You're good to go.
-I'm calling to express my support of defunding SPD by at least 50% now in the rebound budget and in the 2021 budget to align with Decriminalize Seattle and King County Equity Now demands. I'm calling as a worker in the Chinatown International District, as someone that represents the Asian Pacific Directors Coalition and as former board president of Asian Pacific American Strategic Department votes. I see how policing criminalizes poverty in our neighborhood. It doesn't keep anyone safer. It responds to crimes, doesn't prevent crimes. We need housing services. We need mediation. We need drug user help. We need so many other things besides subpoenaed force of police. So please-
Thank you, Christina. Mike Flack, followed by Brian Jacobson and Stephanie Hanley. Mike.
Hi there, my name is Mike Flack, District 3. I'm calling in support of defunding SPD by 50%. We need systems in place that are designed for actual crime prevention. Our current police system has proven itself to be ineffective and also proven itself to be a part of what systemic racism looks like in this country. So please, defund SPD, release the protesters with no charges and no more youth jails. The system cannot be further reformed and therefore needs to be abolished. Please reimagine what public safety can look like. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you. Brian, welcome.
Hello, thank you. I'm Brian Jacobson and I'm a resident of District 3 and proud protester. I support defunding the SPD by at least 50%. This means $85 million for 2020 and reallocated immediately to black and indigenous communities. How long will you allow SPD to attack the media, medics, legal observers, and especially the citizens they're sworn to protect? How long will you allow the mayor, police chief, and SPAG to use the media to spread fear tactics against its citizens, including yourselves? If black lives matter, then vote like black lives matter. No new youth jail, release all protesters without charges, and impeach Mayor Durkin now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And we have Stephanie. Stephanie, good afternoon. Just as we queue up Stephanie, the next three are Stephanie Hanley, Barbara Finney, and Cleve Custin. Stephanie, good morning. Good afternoon.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thanks.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, I would say that it's irresponsible to cut a police department by 50% for a city this size. There's already been 33 homicides this year compared to the 36 all of last year. A lot of people on this call talked about police don't prevent crime, they respond to it. Who's going to respond to crime if you cut a police department by 50%? Fall of units who serve vulnerable victims or DV victims or sexual assault victims, sex trafficking, internet crimes against children will be cut. And who will hold those exploiters accountable? What happens when social workers and mental health workers who respond are assaulted or murdered? 300 speakers on this call are not representative of the entire city as a whole.
Thank you very much for your comments. Barbara, welcome.
This is, I'm Barbara Finney from D5, calling to defund SPD by at least 50%. I'm a delegate to the MLK Labor Council that expelled SPAG last month and I'm asking you, council, to support Councilmember Shawna Sawant's budget amendments to defund SPD by at least 50% for the rest of 2020 and into 2021. Transfer $85 million now from the police budget to black and brown communities. Stop the sweeps of our homeless neighbors. Build housing with services and fund renter organizing and eviction defense. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Cleve, welcome.
Black Lives Matter homeless with support. The city budget is changing because less money coming in, which leads to a crisis. Also, Share supports Black Lives Matter based on cops killing black people all over the United States plus defending the police and social work organizations that could free up $30 million to go to communities who are less fortunate. I support city funding for Share 1033. 1033 is a blessing for shelter, food, to keep people from hunger in a safe place. Also, a destination for volunteers to give your part to society, which could lead to independence. In Seattle, many people are biagreg, noramass homeless, and increasing because of pandemics causing loss of homes, jobs, and businesses.
Thank you very much. The next three are Hussein Upstair, Wheel Low, and Nathaniel Thomas. Hussein, welcome.
Hello, my name is Hussein. I'm here. I am Somali and Seattleite. I was raised in Seattle and I'm calling to not support defunding the police department. The Somali community has worked hard to get Somali officers in the police department. If you fire, wait, did you guys hear that so far?
Yes, we can definitely hear you.
Okay. I'm calling to not support defunding the police department. The Somali community has worked hard to get Somali officers in the department. If you fire them, you will fire the most diverse officers force. Do not defund the police department. StopDefunding.com.
Thank you very much. We, welcome.
Hi, my name is Wei, resident of District 7. The city needs to defund SPD by 50% and reinvest in real community safety through the four-point plan created by Decriminalize Seattle and King County Equity Now. I've seen SPD fail to protect against crimes in CID from white supremacists here for talent against protesters as they exercise their First Amendment rights. The mayor and SPD have made it clear they believe in policing first and community investment second. My tax salary should be going to the community, not to cynical warfare and militarized so-called authority figures with no accountability that don't even live in the city. The budget is a direct reflection of the city's values beyond the right side of history. I don't yield my time.
Okay, the next person will be Nathaniel Thomas, Rachel Kay, and Randy Husick. Nathaniel, welcome.
My name is Nathaniel Thomas. I'm calling in solidarity of the Everyday Marches and the EDM organizers. When I say Seattle City Council, you say take accountability. Seven of you have promised to defund SPD by at least 50% right now in this year's budget, yet only one council member, Sawant, has committed to the 50% amount of $85 million. $85 million is 50%. It's simple math. The four-point plan from King County Equity Now and Decriminalize Seattle does not be funded by 50% and does not specifically guarantee the reallocation of funds into black communities. These four points do not meet our demands.
Okay, Rachel, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Rachel Kay. I am a member of the Democratic Socialists of America and I am calling upon the council to defund the police by 50, at least 50% for the 2020 and 2021 budget shortfall and to reallocate $85 million to black, native, Hispanic, and working-class communities to fund affordable housing. A lot of the landlords, like the, like, please, like, real estate have benefited from gentrification and redlining, and this is-
Thank you, Rachel. Randy, good afternoon.
My name's Randy Huser and I'm a patrol sergeant with the South Precinct. I strongly oppose defunding SPD. Over the last eight years following the consent agreement, the department has become a model for police reform nationwide. Agencies from around the country come to Seattle to look at a department that makes police reform work. Your actions to cut the budget by 50% is reckless, irresponsible, and will have a dramatically negative impact on Seattle. Despite not having any law enforcement experience between the nine of you, you have somehow, over the last two months, become experts on police tactics, response, and training. I strongly encourage you to attend a roll call, attend police training, or go on a ride-along so that you have an actual idea of what it is that the Seattle Police Department does before you cut the department-
Thank you. The next three are Jenna, Jenna Kuncy, Tyler Merrill, and Anitra Freeman. Jenna, you are off mute. Please go ahead. Jenna, can you hear us? Okay, let's go to Tyler and we'll come back to Jenna. Tyler, good afternoon.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Tyler Merrill and I'm a resident of Queen Anne. Calling today to ask you to invest in community-based solutions to public safety and health by defunding SPD by at least 50% and transferring functions such as 911 out of SPD's control. Armed responders do not make our neighborhoods safer, especially when the vast majority of incidents responded to, such as traffic violations, mental health crisis season, wellness checks, are nonviolent and noncriminal. Please continue to follow the lead of Decrim Seattle and King County Equity Now to move the city toward unarmed, community-based solutions to public safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Anitra, welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Anitra Freeman, speaking from Wheel and Share in support of cutting SPD funding for the rest of 2020 by 50% and cutting sweep funding entirely. We need funding for housing, for tiny houses and other 24-hour shelter, for social services that improve lives and end homelessness. Money spent on sleeping encampments or Nicholsville-Northlake isn't just wasted, it is doing harm. The situation of Nicholsville-Northlake is critical. Wheel and Share both ask that you protect our friends at Nicholsville. Thank you.
Thank you, Anitra. Before we move on, is Jenna back with us? Jenna, can you hear us? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and call the next three. Catherine Little, Bradford Gerber, and Alyssa Webster. Catherine, good afternoon.
Hello?
Hi, please go ahead now.
Okay. My name is Catherine Little, resident of District 3. I'm a Seattle Public Schools teacher and union member. I support defunding the police by at least 50%, refunding communities of color, and releasing all protesters without charges. I stand in support of Decriminalize Seattle and the Everyday March. I yield my time.
Okay, thank you. Bradford, good afternoon.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
My name is Bradford, yeah. My name is Bradford Gerber. I'm calling as a citizen to support Decriminalize Seattle's efforts to defund SPD and I'm calling as a staff at the Low Income Housing Institute to echo the sentiments of other testimonies and the BIPOC community leaders to defund SPD and remove SPD and navigation team funding from the budget. I have seen firsthand these sweeps and I've witnessed that we're traumatizing our neighbors with misguided, thought-to-be-good intentions. If you witnessed the forced removal of black and brown homeless neighbors, I think that you would agree. I cede my time.
Thank you. Alyssa Webster, welcome.
$85 million sweep. Oh, hi, my name is Alyssa Webster. I live in District 6 and I support moving at least $85 million of SPD's remaining 2020 funds to black communities specifically. Clearly, the increases in SPD's budget, trainings, and BIPOC officers, which apparently make them a model for policing nationwide, have not magically eliminated the issues within the department Seattle residents are pointing to. Please follow the leadership of BIPOC-led community organizations, including the folks from Everyday March, in investing in alternatives to policing which truly foster community health and safety. Thank you.
Thank you. The next three speakers are Irina Gedinger, Francesca Pashino, and Allison Buckley. Irina, welcome.
Hi, my name is Reina Gedinger and I'm a resident of District 3. I'm calling to ask the council to support the plan by King County Equity Now, including defunding the police by at least 50% this year and next year and reinvesting responsibly in black communities. Seattle police have demonstrated that reform does not work and systemic racism exists within their ranks. They have failed again and again to protect community members and instead have created a culture of fear and violence. I'm sending to the city's lip service the Black Lives Matter movement and continued lack of action. It is up to you, council members, to listen to your constituents and defund SPD now.
Okay, and I hear Francesca. Please go ahead.
I hope you can hear me. I'm marching, I'm walking in front of a march right now. My name is Francesca and I live in District 4. It is imperative that we defund SPD immediately by 50% and reallocate that money into black communities. Black families need affordable housing, particularly as we face a tsunami of evictions following the COVID-19 crisis. Our city's history of redlining has created massive inequities in black families' access to education for their children, as schools are predominantly funded by property taxes. Defunding SPD immediately means we can begin to make that change, addressing inequity in our city, making our city safer, and providing better resources to our residents. I yield my time.
Thank you so much, Francesca. Allison Buckley, Trace Bertoli, and Kiri Johnson. Allison, good afternoon.
Hi, council. My name is Allison Buckley. I'm a resident of District 6. I'm calling in support of defunding SPD by at least 50%. I'm calling at, in support of this as a mem- as a step towards justice for our community members that have been killed by SPD. Charlena Lyles, Tommy Lay, Isaiah Obet, David Morty, John T. Williams, Robert J. Lightfeather, Malik Williams, Mantri Norris, Ryan Smith, Curtis Elroy-Tade, Eugene Nelson, Giovann Joseph McDade, Demetrius Butt, William Strokes, Machance Dunlap Gittens, Shay Taylor, Deontrell Davis, Lonnie Cedric Davis, Michael Ely, Robert Guy Jr., Edward Anderson, Erdman Bascom, Weldon.
Thank you. Please do send in the remainder of the names. Trace, good afternoon.
Hello, I'm Trace Bartoli, a concerned citizen. I do not support the defunding of Seattle Police Department. Thus far on this call, I've heard no direct evidence that taking money from the police department and allocating it towards, uh, communities, uh, in need will positively impact, uh, the everyday individual citizen. Uh, I think the four-point plan of a civilian, uh, police department will only end in utter catastrophe. Uh, they seem just as susceptible to-
Please go ahead.
I just believe a civilian-led will be just as susceptible to, uh, corruption and transparency issues as any other organization could be. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, Kiri, please go ahead.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Kiri Johnson and I'm here on speaking on behalf of defunding the police and to, uh, protect the Nicholsville-Northlake from our move date. And, you know, that's pretty much what I got to say.
Okay, thank you for hanging on the phone, for sharing that message, we appreciate your time. The next three speakers are Tara Dazo, Ellie Cassidy, and Mahal Johnson. Tara, good afternoon.
Good morning, good afternoon. My name is Tara Dazo. I'm a proud homeowner in District Two and a Maple Elementary School mom, avid voter, and not in a quote "special interest group." I'm calling today to urge you to defund SPD by 50% in 2020 and beyond, demilitarize them, ban chemical weapons, end overtime, cap salaries to $150K, and reallocate those to the communities of color. I would also like to add that I'm appalled by the use of excessive force during demonstrations, which I've seen with my own two eyes. I believe that Mayor Durkin and Chief Best have been intentionally spreading disinformation to scare the public and that they have not held SPD to oversight or accountability and should resign. Do not wait.
Thank you, Ellie, please go ahead. Hey Ellie, can you hear us?
She's might be like 24.
Okay, hey Ellie. Okay, we'll come back to you Ellie. Mahal, uh, welcome. Let's try this again. Hi, Mahal, go ahead.
Hello, I do not believe that the Seattle Police Department should be de- defunded. As a resident of District Two, I value police and their current presence in keeping our neighborhood safe from the ridiculousness that our city is becoming known for. Defunding by 50% would overwhelmingly decrease the amount of diversity already in the department and eliminate valuable programs that SPD has already in place with the communities throughout the city. BIPOC communities will ultimately suffer the most, and the speakers on this call do not re- represent the majority of the city. I do not trust the city council recklessly experimenting with defunding public safety.
Thank you very much. Ellie, are you with us still? Hey Ellie, can you hear us?
Hi, I'm on the call.
Great, hi, you're on, we can hear you.
Hi, sorry. Hi, this is Ellie Cassidy, I'm from District Three, and I'm calling to support Decriminalize Seattle's, um, four things that they want to do, and I also want to say that I was a member of a building leadership team at a Title I school, and I want to implore you to put more funds into the reprimand programs because they mean a lot for schools that are Title I, that are, have lower-income students. Um, do something quickly, and by the way, thank you.
Thank you. The next three speakers are Maxwell Goodwin, Rebecca, um, Eve Knight, Eve Knight, and Amelia Mix. Maxwell, good afternoon. Okay, Maxwell, can you hear us? All right, we'll go to Rebecca. Rebecca, welcome.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can, yes.
Thank you. Good morning, my name is Rebecca Edding. I've lived in Seattle my whole life and I currently live in the Maple Leaf neighborhood in District Five. I'm an attorney and a public school teacher. I urge the council, and particularly council member Juarez of my district, to vote to defund the police, meet the demands of King County Equity Now, and implement the four-point plan put forward by Decriminalize Seattle. The SPD has responded to the protests and demands for reform with violence, misleading the media, and threatening to lay off officers of color. They are resisting change. How will police, how will you make sure the police doesn't use the remaining budget to harass protesters and people of color? Please look to bra- black, brown, and indigenous people in our city to answer this question.
Thank you very much. And going back to Maxwell.
Maxwell Goodwin, is that me?
That's you, thanks Maxwell.
Hi, sorry, I was at a march. Hey, my name is Maxwell Goodwin, I live in District Three, um, but my lease is up soon and I'm not sure which district I'm going to move to. I'm a small business owner, I hope to have a storefront soon. When I do, I hope that there aren't police using chemical weapons, uh, explosives, military vehicles, and other things that are scaring business away, not to mention setting up literal military-style checkpoints that are literally keeping people away, keeping customers away, and keeping people scared in their homes. So I'm out of breath, I was at a march. Um, but there's a lot of people, there are some people, uh, that are scared of, um, of violence from protests, and honestly, the very few protests that do that, I mean, the only, I'd say I'm hit like big banks and like Starbucks and like the jail and stuff.
Thank you, Maxwell. Amelia Mix, and then Cameron Haynes Taylor, and Tara Sell. Amelia, good afternoon.
Hi, my name is Amelia Mix and I'm a District One resident. I'm calling in support of the five demands of the Everyday March to support defunding SPD by at least 50%, $85 million immediately, and 50% continuing in the future. I have personally seen racism in our school, and this is only reinforced by a police force with a proven history of excessive force and failed attempts to reform. Defund SPD and reinvest this money into black communities specifically to fund affordable housing, mental health, and education. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, Cameron, welcome.
Uh, hi, this is Cameron. Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, um, hi, uh, my name is Cameron, I'm a District One constituent, and just want to add my voice to all of those who have come before me, um, to urge the city to defund SPD by 50% and reinvest in community-led solutions. Um, today I'm calling specifically as a social worker, I currently work at a shelter with folks experiencing homelessness, and I can't begin to stress how badly we need new alternatives for so many instances that force me and all my coworkers to call 911 unnecessarily. There are basically no better options, and the few alternatives are super underfunded. Um, every work, every week my coworkers and I struggle to find better options for the folks we work for. Um, we don't want to have to call the police to the shelter, they shouldn't be at the women's shelter for 99% of the reason.
Thank you. Um, Tara Sell, followed by Dennis Thom- Thomas, and Tess Feifield. Tara, good afternoon.
Hi, my name is, uh, Tara Sell. Um, I'm speaking today as a Seattle citizen, a resident of District Three in Capitol Hill, and a witness to police brutality at recent Black Lives Matter protests. I strongly believe based on the extreme violence and chemical warfare that I have seen directed at protesters that the Seattle Police Department should be defunded by at least 50%. I believe that if they are not properly using their grossly overfunded budget to actually protect black citizens, an extremely valued and vulnerable part of our community, then they have clearly shown that they do not carry the proper responsibility to use such a budget. This money can be used in so many other ways, to be put into low-income housing for black citizens, youth programs, and directly as reparations to the belt, to the black communities in our city. Especially during this current pandemic, low-income people are currently most at risk for deep financial hardship. Mayor Durkin needs to take responsibility for her terrorism against the city that's supposed to be in her protection, using the SPD as her war pawns. She should be ashamed.
Okay, thank you. And then we'll do Dennis Thomas and Tess. Dennis?
Hi, on Saturday I spoke with an officer at the frontline of protest. I asked if he thought that there, with their resources, that there could have been a middle ground between allowing agitators to throw fireworks at them and attacking an entire group of 99% peaceful protesters, and he literally said, okay, then tell me how we're supposed to do it. They can't find an agitator in a crowd in front of their own precinct. They don't know what they're doing. Councilmembers, we've seen the data on noncriminal calls that you've been presented and know a 50% defund is both reasonable and safe. Move the funds to competent services, defund 50% and set an example for other cities that this is possible and will work.
Thank you very much. And after Tess, I just want to confirm if ReelBeFree and Jenna Kuncy are on. Tess, welcome.
Hi, my name is Tess Feifield. I'm a human and I need you guys to commit to defunding SPD by 50% at least, but we also need to make sure that those budget cuts don't come from losing our BIPOC officers first, as SPD has threatened. Cut those racist and problematic officers first, it's not that hard. Furthermore, you need to reallocate those funds into black and brown communities, direct reparations, and education. SPD has proven over and over again that they misuse and aren't deserving of these funds. They react to crime not, they react to crime not de-escalate and protect. Fuck Spog.
Okay, and wanted to see if ReelBeFree and Jenna are on. Reel, are you with us?
There's no reel.
Okay, and is Jenna?
Jenna's there.
Hi Jenna, thanks for waiting.
Uh, hi. Um, my name is Jenna Kinsey and I'm a resident of Nicholsville-Northlake, and I am calling in support of Trump's march proviso and also to defund the police.
Excellent, thank you. Do you want to say anything else?
Uh, uh, don't sweep Nicholsville-Northlake.
Excellent. Thank you for your time and thank you for staying on the line with us. Uh, the next three people are gonna be Amira Beasley, Sage Eady, and Jenny Price. Amira, good afternoon.
My name is Amira Beasley and I'm a resident of District Three. I support defunding the SPD by at least 50% and reallocating the funds to black and brown communities. We need to focus on treating the issues that lead to crime directly instead of focusing on punitive measures that do not contribute to making our communities safe and disproportionately impact black and brown communities. As a black resident and proud protester, I'm disgusted that our tax dollars are being used for the SPD to terrorize the very people that they've been sworn to protect.
Thank you, you still have a few seconds? Okay. Okay, as a reminder, folks, you're gonna hear a chime at 10 seconds, uh, remaining so that you can wrap up your comments. I'd hate to have folks ca- cut off, so, uh, thank you, Amira. If you did have anything else, please do write back in. Hello, Sage, good afternoon.
Hi, I'm Sagey Day and I support the demands of the Everyday Marches. We must defund SPD by 50% or more immediately. These funds must go directly to black communities and they must have a voice in where this money should go specifically. Unlike police, investing in underprivileged communities prevents crime. Continuing to fund police over things like education, healthcare, and housing equity is to disproportionately deprive black communities of resources and then disproportionately incarcerate them for the inevitabilities of poverty, lacking opportunities, and discrimination. If Black Lives Matter, prove it. Defund SPD and misnue your protesters, shut down the youth jail now and recall Durkin. Thank you.
Thank you. Jenny, good afternoon.
Hi, my name is Jenny Price and I'm a resident of District Four. I'm calling to voice support for the demands of Decriminalize Seattle and King County Equity Now to defund SPD by at least 50% and reallocate those funds to a holistic model of public safety that actually keeps us safe. Policing is an institution rooted in violence against black people. In order to stop that violence, we must defund the police and reallocate those funds to community-led health and safety initiatives. These include full access to affordable housing, community-based anti-violence programs, trauma services and treatment, universal childcare, and free public transit. I specifically call on Alex Peterson to defund by 50%.
Thank you. Jacob, um, Malen Dono, welcome Jacob.
What? Hello?
Hi Jacob, go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. If you'd like to speak, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Jacob Maldonado Nocer, I'm District Two, Tammy Morales, what's up? Here to say to fund SPD by 50% at least, that's $86 million immediately now. We're in a budget crunch, we have to cut costs, SPD is chock full of ways to cut that out. Members have talked about having to negotiate with Spog. Spog reflects the politics of the SPD membership and their guild has never shown any desire to truly change the way SPD operates. Spog wouldn't say Black Lives Matter and the labor union gave him the boot, time for you to do the same. Check in on people's privilege, Peterson, consider what role you're playing in movement for real progress. Please make a cha- plan for change. If you're going to be a quote-unquote "counterbalance," you better have a plan that you would say would have been better than what you're opposing. It's not wrong to insist that we can all do better.
Thank you. Alex Place, followed by Eric Torres and Mary Colino. Welcome, Alex.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Alex Place, I live in District Two, Seattle City Council, this is a call to action. Lead our country, defund the Seattle City Police Department, and show the rest of our country what op-
Alex, you cut out, um, can you still hear us?
Hello?
Okay, hey Alex, uh, hi Alex, why don't we restart your time? You cut out there after a few seconds. Go ahead.
My name is Alex Place, I live in District Two, Seattle City Council, this is a call to action. Lead our country, defund the Seattle Police Department, and show the rest of our country what opportunities flourish when you invest in your communities and when you put an end to white supremacist systems. Show everyone what our country could be. Defund SPD by at least 50%, reallocate those funds to community-led health and safety systems, release protesters arrested during this uprising without charges, end development of the youth jail this second, listen to BIPOC, black trans lives matters, I yield my la- time.
Thank you very much. Eric? Hi, good morning, good afternoon.
Hi, um, I'm Eric Torres, I'm in, uh, District Three. And, uh, yeah, I, I stand with everybody else, uh, to fund the SPD by 50%. Um, I live right across the street from that youth jail construction site. I mean, for real, that needs to come down and you need to build like housing for people. Because, I mean, pretty soon, we're gonna have like a homeless overrun, right? And, and you're throwing like millions of dollars at police, like throw it at the people that need it. For real. I yield my time.
Thank you very much. Mary, good afternoon.
Hello, I'm calling today at budget hearing in support of defunding Seattle Police Department by 50% and reinvesting in community-led solutions because the racial inequities I have witnessed within the short time of 14 months of being a Seattle resident has been alarming. As a high school teacher in the International District, I'm regularly disheartened to hear about and witness ways in which communities of color are disproportionately abused by so many systems that are meant to quote "serve" and quote "protect" all Seattle residents. In addition to defunding SPD by 50%, I urge council members to support Decriminalize Seattle and King County Equity Now's four-point plan for community reinvestment.
Excellent, thank you. The next three people will be Shaleah Allen, Ty Saxton, and we'll go back to Isabel Karen. Uh, Shaleah, good afternoon.
Hi, my name is Shaleah Allen, I'm the Executive Director of SAG-AFTRA in Seattle and a resident of West Seattle for the labor union that represents journalists. A new kind of policing is possible. Defending black lives and defending our First Amendment rights as journalists means defunding the police and reinvesting in the community. I've watched in Seattle and across the country as journalists have been tear gassed, fired upon, and detained by police officers for doing their jobs. Acts of violence on the press, bringing news to the communities they serve are a betrayal of our nation's founding principle that a free press is necessary for the maintenance of a free government. SAG-AFTRA denounces police brutality and supports de-militarizing the police and decriminalize Seattle. Another kind of policing is possible. Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much, and thanks for the work you're doing on behalf of supporters and journalists right now. Ty, good afternoon. Ty, good afternoon.
Uh, hi, my name's Ty. I'm a renter in District Three and an economics instructor and I would like to echo the calls by many others um, to defund SPD by at least fifty percent. Uh, take eighty-five million dollars at least and reinvest it into Black communities specifically in jobs and housing. Um, like, we all want to be safe in our communities, but I think that the, the police have shown that they've, um, not the best solution in terms of providing safety when they're consistently brutalizing our neighbors um, and massively incarcerating people. Um, but I think in terms of providing the, the best return on investment as taxpayers, um, like, the, the most effective way of, of addressing.
Uh, if you could send in the rest of your comments, that would be great. I think, uh, we didn't get a chance to hear your closing comments, so that would be helpful. Um, Isabel Karen, could you, um, get queued up to come? Thanks for waiting on the line.
Yes, hello friends, this is Isabel. And as you probably already know, I do not support this fifty percent defunding of the police. Um, while I understand the four points proposed by the aforementioned organizations, these four points are not a plan. And this city has shown time and time again that they are unable to effectively spend money in a way that actually solves the problem. And I believe I've sent most of you a plan, so I'd like for you to take a look at it, tell me what's wrong with it. And, uh, I think that we need to give this maybe a week. Uh, I think, does that mean my time's up?
Nope, closing comments would be great.
Well, okay, basically, I think we should give SPD a chance to come up with their own proposed plan to defund themselves instead of you having to do it for them.
Thank you so much. Um, the next three people will be Amanda Farman, Valenta Molson Turner and Spiderz Queen. Welcome Amanda.
Hi there, I'm Amanda. I'm a resident of Seattle and I demand that you vote to defund the SPD by fifty percent and follow the four-point proposal to reallocate those funds to Black-led community solutions. I do not think this is reckless. Um, I think the four-point plan is comprehensive. The SPD spends eight hundred and forty-five dollars and fifteen cents on the armor that each officer wears to political demonstrations. This is more than the cost of three hundred and eighty-three Washington school lunches for one officer's armor. This is ridiculous. Defund the SPD and give this money to underfunded Black-led community programs. Thank you.
Thank you. And Valenta, welcome.
Who?
Hi, go ahead. Thank you.
Venetta you're talking to?
Yes, thank you Venetta.
I'm Venetta Molson. And I am, um, working with Pizarro Steel and, uh, and, and a retired nurse. I'm all for defunding the police department, sending that, uh, reinvesting that money into the community, communities of color, people of color and to, um, uh, make things better. And we, I grew up in the Central Area. I know the oppression and the money and
Thank you so much, Venetta. You cut out at the end there with the service. So if you could send in the last of your comments, that would be great, but we heard the majority of what you said. So thank you for waiting on the line. Spiderz, welcome.
I'm Spiderz from D7. Defund police by at least fifty percent, move towards abolishment, invest in Black communities and social needs, give amnesty to protesters, close the youth jail now, not in five years, and recall Durkin. The demands have mass support by Everyday March and other huge protests. I urge Alex Peterson and Deborah Juarez to support the demands. Thank you to my council member Andrew Lewis for his support, solidarity with Everyday March. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time. Okay, just checking in where we're at. I believe the next person is Sarah Bixler, followed by Sylvia Schronenberger and Kylie Thomas. Sarah, good afternoon.
Hello, good afternoon. Excuse me. Hi, um, I'm Sarah. I live in District Four. I'm calling to implore you to defend the Seattle SPD by at least fifty percent. Um, many police officers believe that they are serving the people, but the current system serves people with money only. Um, and helps people feel comfortable, protects power and property. Reforms haven't worked to align these two ideas and so we must do better by our communities in need. Uh, police escalate issues situations and cause aggression. We need to alter, uh, the way we do things and reinvest in the community. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Sylvia, good afternoon.
Hi, please do not defend SPD by fifty percent. The city charter requires there is adequate police protection for each district. A sudden reduction in police would lower safety throughout the city. Just this January, there was a mass shooting downtown which killed one and injured six and sent hundreds running for cover. Earlier in September, there was a shooting in the West Lake Light Rail Tunnel. There was public outcry for more police and in response, you all offer, you all approved, offering hiring because you agreed our growing city needs more police to deal with big city problems. Again, defunding by fifty percent will reduce safety throughout the city. Please do not defund.
Thank you. Kylie, good afternoon.
Hi, can you hear me?
Sure can, thank you.
Thanks. Hello, council members. I live in District Four. Uh, I'm a student. Uh, I would like to say that I support the demands made by our community that you defund SPD by at least fifty percent now. That's eighty-five million dollars. Reallocate that money towards the Black communities, close the youth jail and free protesters wrongfully jailed by the brutal cops you've allowed to police Duamish land. I know you've heard our demands, so why aren't you listening? Alex Peterson, I'm your neighbor and I was struck multiple times by projectiles, projectile astronomy by SPD in a protest. The pain in my body and the emotional trauma I'm going to continue to suffer due to this brutality is incomparable to the violence perpetuated on Black people by SPD since its inception. When are you going to acknowledge the racist and violent history?
Thank you Kylie. Amanda, good afternoon. Amanda Weber.
Uh, hello?
Hello Amanda.
Hi. Uh, my name is Amanda Weber from District Seven and I urge you to defund SPD by fifty percent at least and reinvest in community. Education, transportation, healthcare, affordable housing, this will all go further for public safety, especially for our BIPOC communities than the brutality of SPD. Please listen to your constituents who have suffered, not just the privileged few who benefit from a racist police system. Defund fifty percent and eliminate and transfer S P D sanctions immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. The next three people are Camille Baldwin, Terry Klow and Karen Taylor. Camille, um, welcome.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, my name is Camille and I am a constituent of Seattle District Five. I support Decriminalize Seattle and King County Equity Now four-point plan. It's vital that when we talk about defending SPD, we don't miss sight of reinvestment into community-led health and public safety. We have an opportunity to transform how we approach problems of homelessness, drug addiction and mental health by putting qualified professionals, not armed officers, at the forefront. The city's budget should reflect our values and ideas behind, the ideas behind investing in community solutions over punitive measures are not new. In fact, they were well laid out in the Kerner Report in the nineteen sixties, but.
Camille, thank you so much. If you could send in the rest of your comments, I think you had a few more sentences there. We'd love to hear. Terry, could you, um, get queued up to go and then we'll have Karen Taylor and Michael Monroe. Terry, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, thank you. My name is Terry Klow, resident of Ballard. I've lived here since nineteen ninety-seven and I'm calling again to voice my support for all the Decriminalize Seattle, King County Equity Now demands. I'm not against the police. A hammer for the right job is perfectly acceptable. I am against our racist institutions, SPD's bloated budget and an accountability system that works unutterable at the edges. Even a hammer to address all issues is wrong, harmful and deadly. Stay strong in the upcoming fight against power and their massive disinformation campaign, starting with our mayor and Spog. Power does not relinquish power without a fight. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen, good afternoon. Karen Taylor, followed by Michael Monroe and then Jessica Wesken. Karen? Unfortunately, I think Karen is on mute. Uh, if we could unmute her, that'd be great.
Hello, can you hear?
Now I can, yes. Thanks Karen.
My phone battery died right at the wrong moment.
Oh, you're perfect. This is great.
I'm Karen Taylor and I'm calling to just anecdotally, everyone's made such excellent points, but, you know, when we talk about being leaders of the nation, my sibling and I were just on the side of the march, uh, on Saturday, I believe it was. And it looked like the main cops were doing a lot of stuff they find fun and the guys on the side near us, we were just sort of casually standing around. And the way they behaved was like aggressive teenagers. They started to be like, they're having all the fun and they came after us just to use their toys. Thank you.
Well, thank you for waiting and sharing that anecdote. Appreciate your time. Michael, good afternoon.
Hi, uh, my name is Michael Monroe. I'm a resident of Beacon Hill, District Two. I'd like to thank Tammy Morales for her support. And I want to echo, echo, uh, all the sentiments we've heard today about defunding SPD by at least fifty percent this year. Uh, not to delay and to do that as quickly as we can, right now, there's no excuses. And, uh, to reinvest that money in Black communities, in Rainier Beach, in the Central District, in White Center, places where we know that those funds can be used. Thank you. And I see the rest of my time.
Thank you. Appreciate your time. Uh, Collins, we have seventeen more people who are present that will hopefully get us to the one o'clock mark um, in time for us to take the hour break as planned before the two PM meeting. So I'm going to continue to go ahead, um, given this is within our second ninety, uh, ninety-minute allotment. The next three speakers are Jessica Wesken, Virginia Burton and Charlotte Campbell. Jessica, good afternoon.
Can you hear me?
Sure can. Thanks Jessica.
Okay, this is Jessica. I'm calling on behalf of the Seattle Renters Commission and the Seattle Renters Commission stands in strong support of Black Lives and all those protesting for structural change and how policing is done in our society. Police aggression is targeted at Black people and other communities of color and police president, presence is outsized in poorer neighborhoods. As such, police violence and aggression will always be directed more at renters than homeowners. In addition, the police response to these protests highlight how government is designed to help property and property owners over the needs of others. The city deploys over three hundred and sixty million every year to fund the police, yet only seventy-nine million to address homelessness or twenty-four million for rental housing inspections or sixty-nine million for affordable housing. Because renters own less than three percent of the amount of property that homeowners do, policies that benefit property owners almost exclusively benefit homeowners. These policies.
That was impressive Jessica. If you could send in your comments, that would be very helpful. I think there was a closing comment we didn't get to. Virginia, uh, welcome.
Can you hear me?
Can, yes, thank you.
I'm a resident of District One. Don't allow public threats to force your hands. I'm a current UW student, a former prisoner, drug addict and supervisor of housing programs in Seattle.
Virginia, are you still with us? Um, Virginia, we will get back to you if you call back in. I'm not sure if you can hear us still, but your phone just dropped, I think. So you call back in and we'll save your spot, okay? Charlotte Campbell, you are up next.
Hi, this is Charlotte Campbell in D3. I support Everyday Marches' demands to defund SPD by eighty-five million and move those funds to Black communities. And I demand that EDM has a role in that reallocation. That four-point plan is not enough. Cops don't protect people, they protect property and must be abolished. We got our backs. Black Lives Matter all day, every day. That's it. That's all I got.
Thank you very much Charlotte. Uh, the next three speakers are Jean Darsee, Molly Leja and I would also like to go back to Jamie Patacic at the top, uh, who has called back in. Jean, welcome.
Thank you. Uh, council members, uh, I'm calling in support of Councilmember Swans Proviso to prohibit the expenditure of city funds on sweeping Nicholsville-Northlake. It appears the war between the city's Human Department, Services Department and Nicholsville is continuing. I find this appalling, given the multiple crises going on. Nicholsville has shown a willingness to find a solution. We cannot afford to waste valuable resources on this debate using homeless people as pawns. Please support Councilmember Swans Proviso. These differences need to be resolved so as to sustain all successful options for sheltering people in a time when those resources are severely limited. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Molly, hi.
How, hi, hello. My name is Molly, a resident of District Four. I'm commenting on the issue of policing. Community programs can replace some non-emergent police responses, but what about my safety as a citizen? Can you assure me that my family, my home and public areas like parks will be safe? What if your plan is crime goes up? Who will come to my home if someone breaks in and threatens us? You are called to keep residents of the city safe and you need to address crime. What happened in Chop Chaz is not what we want for our city. The community-led security killed people. Please tell me what your plan specifically for crime is. Are we supposed to put together our own neighborhood security programs or hire security guards for our neighborhoods? How will this lead to more organized crime and more vigilante? You are going to, on the assumption that giving everyone a tiny house makes them a productive member of society. This assumption is wrong and people will still commit crimes. What will you do?
Thank you very much Molly. And feel free to send in your comments. I think we got the most of it, but it sounded like one sentence got cut off. Um, Jamie Potsek and then Virginia Burton. Jamie, are you with us still?
Uh, yeah, hi, my name's Jamie Potsek. I'm a resident of District Six and a member of the Sunrise Movement, speaking in solidarity with Decriminalize Seattle, King County Equity Now and the People's Budget Movement to ask that you cut the SPD budget by at least fifty percent immediately and reinvest those funds specifically into Black and Brown working class communities. The fact that the SPD budget is greater than what the city spends on human services, affordable housing, neighborhoods, arts and culture combined, while the police continue to use increasingly militarized tactics to suppress people practicing their First Amendment rights is disgusting. Uh, these funds should be put towards affordable housing, community-based organizations and renter eviction defense. Um, additionally, these cuts should be used to restore funding to the Green New Deal Oversight Board and to fund a nine-one-one call center that's separate from the SPD. I'd also like to call on you to stop using city resources to prosecute protesters.
Thank you very much. Uh, thanks for waiting. And Virginia, are you back with us? Hi, Virginia.
Hi, uh, I'm a current UW student, a former prisoner, drug addict and a supervisor of a housing, of housing programs in Seattle. Defunding is going to attract and encourage more criminal behavior. It won't be enough to fund the services communicated, especially housing. As a former criminal, I would have taken full advantage of a lack of police presence to victimize citizens in the city. As a DV victim, SPD saved my life in two thousand and sixteen. I would have been beaten to death had they not arrived. Defunding is a decision for all of Seattle, not three hundred people calling in and seven of nine council members. And I support the two council members that are opposed to defunding.
Thank you and thank you for calling back in. Sorry the line got dropped. The last, the next three speakers are Ben S., Jay Andarela and Andrea Marcos. Ben, good afternoon.
Hello. Hi Ben, District Six. Thank you for all of your work. You rock. SPD and Spog have lost even more trust in our community. On July twenty-fifth, they violated their own manual titled Eight and Five: Use of Force and Code of Conduct. Things have changed. We can't trust them to operate by rules they wrote themselves. The police have been nothing short of dishonest with national media and government. Spog funding petition is already full of non-resident impulsion and defund them. We can use this money for healing, growth and opportunity instead of refunding city-sponsored casualties and mass casual events. Decriminalize Seattle. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, let's see, the next three speaker, oh, sorry, the next speaker is Jay. Welcome Jay.
Hi, I'm Jay, organizer, Asians and Pacific Islander Americans for Civic Empowerment. Y'all need to address the root of crime to eliminate it. SPD and youth jails do not address the root. They control communities. Community, social services and housing address the root. Black communities are disproportionately surveyed, brutalized and murdered, yet this is not enough evidence for y'all that SPD needs defunding. Reform isn't enough anymore. Defund SPD by fifty percent and reinvest in community to keep us safe and end the racist criminal justice system.
Thank you very much. Um, the next three speakers are Andrea Marcos, George Howard and Chris Weber. Andrea, welcome.
Hi, my name's Andrea Marcos. I'm a resident of District Two. I want to live in a city that can imagine a world beyond deadly policing and supports community-led efforts to get there. Please defund SPD by fifty percent and invest in community-led solutions. There's plenty of examples in the last few months, few years, why we should defund. And I also want to share that even ten years ago, as a queer young person living in the U District in an abusive relationship, I never called the cops on my then-partner. I knew that them ending up in jail wouldn't help, wouldn't heal, would cause further harm. I didn't know who to call, I didn't rely on a I didn't know who to call. I didn't rely on a classist, racist, ableist, and transphobic policing system. This city can make an important move to change that right now for other people and invest in community-led responses to conflict and violence. We don't need more cultural competency trainings for cops. We need new systems. We need institutions that are life-affirming and not deadly. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. George, good afternoon.
Hi, my name is George Howard. I'm an MPH candidate at UW, and defunding SPD is a public health necessity. This blatantly excessive SPD budget towers over budgets for other discretionary services, including resources for our houseless neighbors. SPD spent $6.3 million over just 12 days of protests following the lynching of George Floyd. It's generous to call this kind of spending reckless when the impact is death to black people in our community. Defenders of black lives will not settle for less than a 50% budget cut to SPD. The council is in a unique position to respond to this call to action in 2020 by reducing the budget by $85 million. Follow through, show love to your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris, good afternoon.
BIPOC communities.
Hi, Chris, if you could start again, thank you.
Hi, I live in District Three. I support the five demands from Everyday March. SPD must be defunded by at least 50%. The money reinvested in BIPOC communities, and the youth jail must be shut down within the year, not by 2025. Chief Best tweeted that budget cuts result in layoffs affecting mostly BIPOC officers. This is unacceptable. A new contract with SPOG must be negotiated. Layoffs should be based on the number of complaints filed against an officer, and the salary cap of $200,000 must be instituted. Durkin must resign, and Councilmember Peterson, you about to lose your job. Black lives matter, and booty cheeks. I yield my time.
Josh White, followed by Dave Simpson and Marina Garrett. Josh, good afternoon. Hey, Josh, if you can hear me, please go ahead. Josh, we're going to come back to you unless you can hear me.
Okay, what can I get for you?
Okay, I'll come back to Josh. Dave Simpson, good afternoon.
Hi, I'm Dave Simpson. I'm a resident and worker in District Seven. I want to voice my support for defunding SPD by at least 50% in the 2020 rebalancing package. That money should be reinvested into black communities. I'm calling on Councilmember Peterson and Juarez to get on board as well. Councilmember Lewis, I found it really interesting last week that you were the first to criticize Councilmember Swans Protest or Prosecution Proviso, regardless of the cooperation of any of our prosecuting institutions. Take a stand, council members, because your constituents are watching. They're being mauled, shot at, and gassed in the streets by the racist and violent police. Defunding cannot wait. Thank you.
Thank you. And Marina Garrett, welcome.
Hi, my name is Marina Garrett. I'm a resident of District Three. I support defunding SPD and reinvesting those funds in the black communities, and as you've heard from many others today, SPD is completely out of control and is waging war on the citizens of Seattle. I urge you to embrace the fact that a 50% cut to the SPD budget means laying off officers. To support public safety, we need to fire all officers with multiple complaints against them first, then fire all officers who have used excessive force on protesters. There must be consequences for violent and racist behavior. Renegotiate the contract with SPOG to make this happen. It should be an easy decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move on, just confirming Josh White. Can you hear us now? You are up, if you can hear us. Hi, Josh, can you hear us? Hi, Josh, you there? All right, let's move on. I know we have Candace Luth, who called in earlier, so we will tee her up, and then Brendan Wallace and Mark Strasberg. If we can have Candace Luth, please go first. Thank you.
Hi there, good afternoon, council. My name's Candace Luth, and I'm a renter in D5. I am calling to urge all council members, particularly my council member Juarez, to defund SPD by at least 50%. Funds need to be immediately reinvested into black community and specifically in areas such as education, healthcare, mental health, housing and food security, and community-led public safety solutions. Land needs to be given to black communities in order to work towards repairing generations of inequity in this city. I urge council to immediately take this necessary action. Thank you very much for your time and have a great afternoon.
Thank you for your time and thanks for calling in. Brendan, good afternoon.
Hi, good afternoon, council. My name is Brendan Wallace. I live in Greenwood in District Six. I'm calling in support of defunding the SPD by at least 50%. It's not reckless to ask a hospital to have more primary care doctors and nurses and fewer surgeons. It's not reckless to install airbags in seatbelts in cars and expect to need fewer paramedics on the highway. Similarly, it's not reckless to try to proactively make our communities safer by defunding the SPD to invest in public education, affordable housing, and participatory budgeting that puts resources into underfunded black communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark, good afternoon. We have Mark Strasberg, then Chris Quincy, and lastly, we will have Sadie Scott Hobson. Mark, are you with us? Okay, we'll come back to you. Mark, Chris, are you with us?
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Chris Quilisi. I live in District Seven in the Lower Queen Anne neighborhood of Seattle on stolen land from Duamish people. I'm asking that City Council approve at least a 50% cut to the remaining SPD budget for 2020, in addition to cutting at least 50% for 2021, with accompanying reinvestments in real community safety through the plan created by Decriminalize Seattle and King County Equity Now. We do not live in a movie where organized crime runs rampant unless the hero cops save the day. The fear expressed by others on this call if police are defunded pales in comparison to the fear that BIPOC feel every day from the system that is supposed to be serving them. Police advocates will tell you that evil is out there and that they're the only thing protecting us from it, but that is fear-mongering. The city budget directly reflects this city's values. Please accurately...
Thank you very much, Chris. And the last person that we see signed up, and it is exactly 1 o'clock, is Marlo Magics. Marlo, good afternoon.
Hello, this is Marlo Magics. I'm a melanated, mixed-race, disabled, and low-income constituent who is deeply, deeply low-income and unstably housed, and asking for your full and immediate pioneering of an unprecedented proposal of reducing SPD's budget by 50% this year for the 2022 remaining budget to financially rebalance and immediately invest in civilian-controlled prevention and restorative justice systems. Replace current 911 operations with civilian-controlled systems. Scale up community-led organization solutions. Find... I lost the email, but I can email the rest. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much, Marlo. Appreciate you sending in the rest and appreciate you being on the line. Council colleagues, we have reached the end of the folks who have signed up for public comment today. I know that there was a lot of folks who probably wanted to comment and needed to jump off either for work or running their small business, so we do appreciate them sending in their public comment, but we were able to get to everyone who was on the line through this 1 o'clock period. At this point, council colleagues, I'm going to give you an hour break for lunch, and we will return with Lisa Kay and Director Arstad to walk us through the agenda that's in front of us. As a reminder, this will start with an overview of the SPD inquest as it's been launched so far and what to expect next as a brief summary of what to expect later this week. Director Arstad will provide us with an overview, answering some of the budget questions that were asked last week, leading into the overview of non-SPD-related amendments, and then we will vote on those on Friday, along with our SPD-related amendments, teeing up those for discussion on Friday. With that, we will be adjourned until 2 PM. Do try to reply or log back in promptly as we will start immediately. There will not be public comment again, as we had an extended period this morning, as evidenced by our over-three-hours of public testimony. So we'll jump back in at 2 o'clock. Enjoy your lunch, and this meeting is recessed until 2 PM. Thank you, council colleagues.